The following is a production of Kari TV, the town of Kari's government access channel.
Call to order the February 23 meeting of the Kari Town Council. And at this time, I would ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business we have this evening is the adoption of the agenda. We have been asked to remove item 6.4, which is the bid award for the Kilmain Drive Elevated Water Storage Tank, from the agenda. Staff intends to recommend the rejection of all bids and will re-advertise the invitation for bids. This item should return to council probably in a March meeting. If there's a motion to, is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. A real hot mic. We now move to our second item, recognitions, reports, and presentations. I would like to, at this time, recognize Boy Scout Troop 152 is in the audience tonight. They meet at Genesis United Methodist Church and are working on their citizenship and community badge. Would you please stand and be recognized? We really appreciate you being here. Okay, we now move to our third item, Public Speaks Out. Our next agenda item is Public Speaks Out, and we've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. If you would like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. And I know a lot of people here tonight are here for a public hearing, so your time to speak will be at the public hearing. As a reminder to our audience tonight, the Trimble zoning is a hearing. So again, public hearing. Speakers should wait for that time before you speak. All right, I'll enforce three-minute time limit, be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium. When that green light turns to a flashing yellow light, it means you have 30 seconds remaining. When the flashing yellow light, when the yellow light turns to a flashing red light, that means your time has expired. And at that point, I'm going to interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. I thank everyone in advance for adhering to the three-minute time limit. We also ask that if you're here with a group, please have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of the group and reduce repetitive comments. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone for Public Speaks Out? I guess everybody's waiting for the public hearing. Last call for Public Speaks Out. Okay, we'll close Public Speaks Out. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review the Consent Agenda items. One vote approves all of these items. On the Consent Agenda, we have minutes for February 9 council meeting, 17A02 S&amp;K Partnership LLC Annexation, 17A01 Robert Rich Annexation, 16A24 Hall Foundation Parkside Apartments Annexation, 16RZ31 Ryan Spring Residential Preliminary Development Plan and Associated Consistency Statement, Consideration of Amendment to Ordinance Regarding Public Transportation System, Condemnation Resolutions to Secure Necessary Easements for the Raw Water Transmission Parallel Pipeline Projects. Would council members like any of these pulled for discussion for tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for Public Speaks Out. Apply for public hearings with one exception. Instead of three minutes, you now have five minutes for your comments. Our first public hearing is an annexation 16A21 VNA N and Anupama Chernelli Annexation. Mr. Nicholas will introduce the hearing. Council will take action on this item this evening. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of .64 acres located off Mooresville Parkway, approximately 400 feet west of the intersection with Weldon Ridge Boulevard. Property is located in Kari's ETJ and is contiguous to the existing corporate limits. It's own plan development district major and it's part of the Weldon Ridge PDD. This request is not associated with a development plan. The area proposed for annexation, which is shown in red on the slide here, is a portion of the larger triangular-shaped piece that you see just to the west, and that is already in the corporate limits. Since the property is split by the town boundary, the owner is simply wishing to annex the current unincorporated area so that all of his property is within the town limits. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for 16A21, and I would call the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, ask council members for any questions or comments.
Make a motion to approve 16A21.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This takes us to our second public hearing. 16RZ24 Trimble Avenue Res zoning, residential rezoning. Ms. Dry will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but instead, it will be referred to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. The item will return to council at a future meeting, and that's usually a couple of months away. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, council. For your consideration is a request to rezone 2.58 acres at 113 Trimble Avenue. I will also note that this is one of the first public hearings for a rezoning application since the adoption of Kari's new comprehensive land use plan, the Kari Community Plan. So I will share this presentation, the first portion, I'll talk about the rezoning, and then Phil Smith with the Town of Kari Planning Department will share an evaluation of the Kari Community Plan. This site is located at Trimble Avenue, which is west of Chatham, uh, west of Chatham Street and Bethel Baptist Church. It is on the corner, um, it is just south of that corner of West Chatham Street, below Bethel Baptist Church. Uh, we've got Old Apex Road to the west, Southwest Maynard Road to the east. So to further orient you with this site, uh, the site is located here, highlighted in yellow. It is zoned R40. The site is adjacent to the Savon Heights neighborhood, which is to the east, zoned R12. It is across the street from a five-lot subdivision called North Meadow, which is zoned R8. And that subdivision is just north of Scottish Hills North. Uh, the property is to the south, um, directly to the south is R40, and going further down is R20. Uh, this is just a shot, a photograph of the site. You can see a portion of the site is cleared, uh, the back portion is wooded. This is another image, uh, looking south down Trimble Avenue. This map indicates the current zoning of the area. Uh, the site that is being requested to be rezoned is this site here. Um, it's in brown, which means it's R40. The yellow properties to the east are zoned R12. Across the street is zoned R8, and further south is R8 as well with its green. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to transitional residential conditional use. This zoning change would keep the land uses residential, but would allow an increased density. The applicant has proposed conditions associated with this rezoning request. They include limiting the uses to detached dwellings and townhomes, uh, including that no more than five units per townhome building, um, will be associated with each townhome, adding architectural standards for the townhomes, indicating that no townhomes will front on Trimble Avenue, and including a six-foot-high fence adjacent to the existing residential properties. The applicant has noted that they intend to propose changes to the zoning conditions tonight. Um, so at this time, I'm presenting what's currently in the application and what you have in your staff report. So to further illustrate, again, the existing conditions from the staff report, um, their conditions as they currently read indicate that only detached dwellings would front Trimble Avenue, as you can see here in yellow, meaning that only townhomes or detached dwellings would be behind them. And there would be a buffer required in between what's being proposed and the existing developed properties. The buffer would vary depending on the type of use. They're also proposing a six-foot-high privacy fence. Just to give you an idea of what's currently allowed in the current zoning of R40, um, currently, the property could be developed for detached dwellings or manufactured homes, or a variety of other uses with a special use permit. Uh, the land uses that are being proposed with the current zoning application are detached dwellings or townhomes. According to the Town of Kari GIS maps, there are no stream buffers located on this site. However, field determination of these features will occur during the development plan review. According to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, no park site is proposed in the vicinity for this parcel, um, and this parcel is not proposed for open space conservation. The subject property is located within one mile of the Annie Jones Park and Dorothy Park. It is in with, within 1.2 file miles of Bond Park, and it is, um, about half a mile to the Higgins Greenway. According to the Conference of Transportation Plan, Trimble Avenue, which is located just adjacent to the site, is a local road. The nearest thoroughfares are West Chatham Street to the north, Southwest Maynard Road. Uh, there are transit routes in the vicinity along Southwest Maynard Road. Associated with this rezoning, there was two neighborhood meetings. One was a required neighborhood meeting that's required for all rezoning applications. That was held on December 7th. Um, there were approximately 115 attendees. The applicant held an additional neighborhood meeting on January 12th. Uh, there were around 100 attendees at that meeting. Concerns that we've heard from nearby property owners and citizens include concerns regarding the rezoning application and process, flooding and stormwater, uh, potential for a road connection to Palmetto Drive, traffic and speed on Trimble Avenue, uh, housing types specifically that was concerned about townhomes being proposed, density and buffers, and the developer, as well as CDBG support through the town. So with this case, we've heard a number of concerns from citizens regarding a number of issues. So we'd like to spend just a few minutes addressing some of those concerns. Um, secondly, this case is one of the first cases being evaluated under the new Kari Community Plan. So, uh, my colleague Phil Smith with the Planning Department will share an evaluation of this case under the Community Plan. Um, first, we've heard concerns from citizens regarding the, the history of, of the rezoning when the application was submitted in regards to when the Kari Community Plan was adopted. So I'd like to kind of lay out the history a little bit to clear up any, um, questions that people may have. So, um, the Kari Community Plan started in 2013. It was actually entering its last phase of completion in July of, of last year, 2016, which is around the same time that the rezoning application for this case was submitted. The applicant submitted their rezoning application initially for residential multifamily, and they submitted a comprehensive plan amendment associated with that rezoning. Um, around the same time, the Kari Community Plan was being shared with citizens through open houses. The applicant learned of the Kari Community Plan and decided to withdraw their comprehensive plan amendment and put the rezoning on hold until the Kari Community Plan was adopted so they could take it forward, um, after the adoption of the plan. So in August, they let us know they'd like to put it on hold and withdrew their comprehensive plan amendment. Um, moving forward, November through December, the, the Kari Community Plan went forward with public hearings. In November, the applicant notified the town that they'd like to restart their rezoning process, again, with the intention of coming to public hearing after the adoption of the plan. In December and January, they held neighborhood meetings. In January, uh, due to feedback at the neighborhood meetings, the applicant changed their request from residential multifamily to transitional residential conditional use. Uh, and this was around the same time that the Kari Community Plan was adopted. And that brings us tonight, which is the public hearing for the case. So just to summarize some of the changes to the application, again, in July, the request was for residential multifamily with an associated comprehensive plan amendment. But the applicant also had a condition at that time to have a maximum of 23 townhomes or patio dwellings on the site. They since then asked to put the rezoning on hold, withdrew the comprehensive plan amendment, and as, um, as of January, changed their zoning request to TR, which is transitional residential conditional use, placing conditions of a maximum of 15 detached dwellings or townhomes with additional conditions associated. And then, of course, um, again, tonight, it's my understanding that there may be additional conditions offered at the meeting. Another concern we've heard from, um, the community is regarding the town's Community Development Block Grant. So just to give a little bit of background on this, the Town of Kari is a Community Development Block Grant entitlement community, which means the town receives funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The town can use the CDBG funds for a variety of projects, including economic development, social services, public utilities, and affordable housing. And each year, after an opportunity for public comment, the town adopts an annual action plan. The fiscal year 2017 plan commits funding in principle to Habitat for Humanity, who is intended purchaser for this site. Uh, the town chose Habitat, uh, chose the Habitat project through a competitive process. The funding, however, is contingent upon the rezoning being approved. If the rezoning is not approved, then the town has the option to transfer funding to another project. The funding for new affordable housing is actually just one component of the CDBG plan for the town. The fiscal year 2017 funding for affordable housing is indicated here in orange and represents just 19% of the funding proposals. A third concern we've heard is regarding drainage and flooding. Nearby property owners have noted stormwater concerns in the area. The town has also received a petition for stormwater improvements. As you can see from this map here, um, the subject site, which is highlighted here in purple, does not have any stream buffers on the subject property. But there are properties within close proximity which do have stream buffers. Further, if the site is, is rezoned and is, and is developed, it would be required to have a stormwater management, which includes mitigation to the one, two, five, and 10-year storm events, among other requirements for the town's land development ordinance and Swift Creek water man, uh, land management plan. The Town of Kari's Water Resources Department Stormwater Engineering Manager, Billy Lee, is available to share more information on drainage and answer questions should the council have questions on this topic. We've also received a number of concerns from citizens regarding the potential connection from Palmetto Drive in the Savon Heights neighborhood through to Trimble Road. So just to orient you, um, Palmetto Drive is the street here. It currently stubs to the edge of the Savon Heights neighborhood. It was platted in 1969 with the neighborhood and stubs to the edge of the, the edge of the neighborhood here. It does not connect through to Trimble Avenue. This is a picture of the stub as it, it looks today. So after further researching this requirement for the road connection, town staff noted that the deed that conveyed the land to the town, this land here to the north of the site, um, conveyed the property to the town in fee simple and did not dedicate the property as right-of-way. Because the property is owned by the town in fee simple and has never been designated as right-of-way, any future developer would not be required to construct a Palmetto Drive extension. Instead of a road connection, this property would be considered develop, or undeveloped vacant property, and a buffer would be required adjacent to it. So no road connection would go through with this property. So now I'll turn things over to Phil to talk a little bit more about the evaluation of the site under the Kari Community Plan.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening, council. Uh, since this is the first rezoning request to be evaluated under the Kari Community Plan, we thought it'd be appropriate to spend a little time going through how it will be evaluated. Uh, we've not completed that analysis. Wouldn't be appropriate to do so until we've heard from the public, uh, but just want to tell you how, how it will progress. Uh, we'll be analyzing, uh, the proposal for compliance with the new plan, and there are four aspects of that that we will examine. First, we will examine and evaluate the proposal against applicable plan policies from each chapter of the plan. Second, since this rezoning involves an infill lot, we will look to plan for guidance regarding infill compatibility. The plan also provides a lot of guidance regarding transitions between developments. We will have primarily look at the zoning conditions that are proposed to evaluate the transition aspect. And then finally, we will consider, uh, conformance with the Growth Framework Plan. To dive in these a little bit more detail, uh, the relevant plan policy, we have identified five policies so far that have applicability to this case. Three from the live chapter, one from the work chapter, and one from the shape chapter. We will analyze how well the rezoning proposal conforms to these five policies, and we may find other policies as we continue our analysis. Regarding infill compatibility, we would call your attention to this guiding statement from the plan. Residential infill should be in visual harmony with the contact, surrounding context, but that does not mean that the homes must be of the same type or look exactly the same as the surrounding houses. The plan devotes a lot of attention to transitions as transitions are becoming increasingly important as we move to our new reality of being a infill and redevelopment community. There are four approaches to transitions identified in the plan. Form transitions are gradual, uh, changes in height, bulk, and setbacks. Use transitions are a gradual change in land use. In this case, we will be looking at a transition of uses from the single-family neighborhoods to the, uh, south and east to the more intense multifamily institutional and industrial uses along West Chatham. Architectural transitions create compatibility through, compatibility through good design. And then finally, where gradual transitions may not be sufficient, the use of natural birth buffers can help separate uses. As stated earlier, we will look to the zoning conditions to determine conformance with the plan. Uh, the limit on the types of housing speak to the first two, uh, transitional aspects, and, uh, architectural standards proposed speaks to the third. And finally, uh, the fence and buffer requirements that are proposed speaks to this last aspect. The final aspect that we will examine is consistency with the Growth Framework Plan. As seen from this section of the Growth Framework Plan, the proposed property is located in the Heritage Neighborhood category. Heritage neighborhoods are described in Chapter 6, Shape, and are defined as, uh, neighborhoods that were built during the first suburban boom from 1960s to the, through the 1980s. It contain a wide variety of housing types, sizes, and densities, and they are the most mixed of any of the four residential categories that we have. Character is further described, uh, and character is defined as being well-connected and convenient to a variety of uses, having a variety of housing types and price points, and housing sizes do not, not, do not dominate their lots. Again, as this case proceeds through the rezoning process, staff will be putting all this into a written analysis in the staff report. Council, of course, will make your own statement of consistency as you do currently with all rezoning cases at the time of approval or denial of the request. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Katie.
Thank you, Phil. Properties within 800 feet of the subject site were notified of the public hearing. The property was posted with public hearing signs and legal ads were placed in accordance with the Town of Kari Land Development Ordinance. Also, it, from what I understand, the applicant doesn't intend to make changes tonight. Um, if, if they do so, make changes to their conditions, then a second public hearing would be required when this case goes to the Planning and Zoning Board in April, um, which means that, again, we would post the site, send out mail notices, and place legal ads, same as you would have tonight. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is, it, the applicant's team is here to share comments on the rezoning. Following that, um, following the public hearing, staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. This time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, uh, I'm Kevin Campbell. I reside at 104 Whitby Court in the Town of Kari, and I'm here representing Habitat for Humanity of Wake County as our CEO. Um, I have prepared some comments in writing in, in respect of your time, so I will plan to read, which I don't normally prefer to do, but, uh, bear with me on that. First of all, thank you for holding this hearing. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight, and we really appreciate the opportunity we've been afforded with your staff throughout this process. As you know, Habitat for Humanity of Wake County has this property at 113 Trimble Avenue under contract with the Bethel Baptist Church, and we have appreciated the opportunity throughout the project to engage with neighbors, with your staff, and with you on this opportunity to rezone this property for the development of affordable housing. We also appreciate the work of landscape architect and, and professional land planner Willie Hood for his work on this project. On our behalf, Willie is here to answer any technical questions from us that you may have throughout the hearing. While this is a rezoning case, it is an important piece of discussion, I believe, to acknowledge that Habitat's desire is to provide much-needed affordable housing options in the Town of Kari. I think it's difficult for us to have this discussion without mentioning that. Density of development is a key factor, if not the key factor, in lowering per-unit development cost to levels affordable to many families in the community in need of affordable housing. In most cases, uh, density increases equate to additional profit for the builder or developer, but in Habitat's case, I can say the lower cost per unit is entirely passed along to the buyer, thus making the unit affordable. I feel that density in this case is a public benefit. As mentioned in Katie's report, we have held two meetings, uh, with neighbors and have had numerous additional individual and small group meetings with neighbors to discuss the project. We have been keen listeners throughout the project and have dedicated ourselves to that and have always done our best to address concerns raised by the neighborhood. The overall process has been a good one. From my perspective, my only regret is that I feel a missing component of the discussion to date is hearing from those in need of affordable housing. We haven't had a lot of that conversation. I'm not blaming anyone for that, just something that, uh, I've noted that voice has been absent. Earlier this week, as Katie mentioned in her report, we learned that a landscape buffer would be required for the northern boundary of this property in lieu of the extension of Palmetto Drive. Uh, we, in studying that, in learning about that, in studying that, uh, we learned that this requirement makes the development that we're, as we've proposed tonight of the site impractical. Sounds strange, it's a small buffer, uh, but the development, uh, requirements were tight, and, uh, that, uh, requirement for that buffer makes the plan that we've submitted not practical from our perspective. by a neighbor in the community, and we embraced it. We liked it as an opportunity to provide affordable housing to 15 families while maintaining a single-family detached streetscape along Tremble Avenue. Additionally, we feel that this plan is something that resonates strongly with the Cary Community Plan that you recently adopted for infill and redevelopment in heritage neighborhoods. Frankly, we are disappointed to not be able to move forward with this plan. Nonetheless, we'll move forward. Given the recently discovered buffer requirement, we are happy to offer some significant changes to our request, and will submit these in writing in the form of an affidavit to town staff following this meeting for consideration at a future planning and zoning board meeting public hearing. We would like to offer a plan to rezone the property, stick with the same rezoning transitional residential conditional use, but to build not more than nine, single-family detached homes, all fronting Tremble Avenue. Additionally, we would agree to the following conditions, and will place these in writing as required. All homes will be built on crawl space foundations with brick on the front elevation to the grade. All homes will have a covered front porch facing Tremble Avenue. All homes will have driveways that will allow two vehicles to park side by side. All homes will have a minimum front setback of 30 feet from Tremble Avenue. And all homes will have an attached storage facility at the rear of the buildings. In addition to these conditions, we will offer that the lots will average 8,000 square feet or more. We will utilize a variety of house plans and elevations across the nine units. It will not be a single plan. And that we will meet or exceed required stormwater regulations, that of course we are required to do, such that the rate of runoff from this site will not increase from pre-development levels. We are pleased to offer these enhancements, but due to the costs associated with this project and the costs associated with the lower density that we are submitting, we do not feel we're able to offer additional enhancements as some neighbors have requested. We've appreciated the efforts that have been led by neighbor Mr. Reed Phillips of 215 Tremble Avenue on the property's southern boundary and the surrounding neighbors that support a development at this level of density and style. We appreciate Reed's and others' efforts to present something to which they could agree rather than just stating their objections. We really appreciate that effort. There has been give and take, I think, on both sides, from the neighborhood, and I feel from Habitat as well, and that's important. We hope that you all, the council, will consider this favorably when this proposal returns to you, understanding that you can have successful affordable housing in the community with high quality of construction and without additional design and material specifications that add to the costs and hurt affordability. To close, there must be some give and take around density, design requirements, and public funding to make affordable housing work in a tight real estate market. We thank you for listening and for your consideration of this substitute proposal, and we are here happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Before I open the public hearing, I do want to say that Habitat does great service for this community and other communities. I've actually volunteered for Habitat and built houses in Raleigh, but as far as I'm concerned, I have to look at the worst-case scenario, and this doesn't have to be a Habitat project. Once it's rezoned, it can be something else. So in my conversation, I have to look at the type of use. And so I just wanted to say that upfront, I don't want this to be for and against Habitat because that's not what we're deciding with this project going forward. It's about the type of use. So I'll ask and beg and plead with the audience as they speak to speak to the rezoning and not to the applicant, and that would be more beneficial to the council because that's the decision they're going to be making. So having said that, now's the time for the public hearing, 16 R E Z 24, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
I'm Anthony Chris Arnold. Most folks just call me Tony. For 23 years, I've lived at 910 Brook Green Drive that's downstream from the property under consideration. I was last before this council more than 20 years ago for a rezoning hearing on other property on Tremble. I came to that hearing with photos of a large area of the land under a foot and a half of water. My concerns were ignored, and the property was rezoned, and right in the middle of a tract with that photo of the water, a home was built. And last year, the Town of Cary spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to purchase back that property and demolish that home. For more than 20 years, I've seen the volume and velocity of water coming down the stream increase. Much of the property behind me is now labeled a 100-year floodplain, but I see the flood, I see the plain flood every year, often several times a year, more and more, deeper and deeper. Last year, my own home flooded, even though my house is not even in a 500-year floodplain. Cary Stormwater employees came out more than once to examine the damage. They also brought out a representative of the state flood program. They all said my flooding was due to a once-in-more-than-a-thousand-year rainfall event, but they each said they couldn't promise that it wouldn't happen next week. By my count, we've had two thousand-year rain events in the last five years. The first one did not flood my house nor my property, but more development has occurred upstream since then. A few weeks ago, I discovered that I had not followed the formal process to file a complaint with the town regarding stormwater concerns. Billy Lee, your stormwater manager, explained to me the process, sent me the proper form. As I looked at the form, I realized that the issue was bigger than just me or my immediate neighbors, but involved all of us up and down that stream. And many had already experienced thousands of dollars of damage. That's why the owners of 18 homes, everyone I approached, filed a petition for stormwater improvement with Cary Stormwater on February 13. Jenny forwarded, emailed each of you on that same date our petition, which was addressed to you. We ask you as a commission to survey, or we ask you as a council to commission a survey and study of not just the stream, but of the entire watershed, to fully understand the cause of the flooding and the damage. And we also ask you to put a moratorium on further development in the watershed until the results of the study are evaluated. Let me tell you about three of my co-petitioners. I was shocked when one showed me the 16-to-20-foot-deep bluff just a mere few feet from his back door that that stream had cut. You don't have to go to California to see a house perched on a cliff about to fall down. All you have to do is go to Tremble Avenue. Another one, petitioner, is in favor of the Habitat property project, but when she looked out her back window and saw the ravine cutting into her property and construction debris in the ravine, she said, you know, there needs to be a survey, there needs to be some evaluation of what's going on. A third petitioner confided in me that last year, someone sleeping in their downstairs bedroom was asleep when they were inches of being flooded out. The danger is real, and it's not just a property, it's to human lives. Each additional gallon of runoff from hard surfaces caused by new development, like the Habitat project, may turn a growing problem into a catastrophe. The town may need to spend hundreds of thousands or even millions of dollars buying houses that are going to be underwater, and in the process also losing tens of thousands of tax dollars. I do want to commend the council for the quality of your staff. The folks at Stormwater, at Planning, Jenny, they've been excellent, professional, helpful, friendly. But now I'm before you as a council, appealing to you. If you can't postpone a decision on the rezoning until after a proper survey...
Your time has expired. If you have additional comments, you can leave them with the town clerk, and she'll make sure we get them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Scott D. Doug. I'm here because I met a lot of people like Tony, and it's worse than he described. I also live downstream from one of your high-density areas. What I really want to do tonight was read something, and I hope everyone's seen this before, I hope it isn't news, but it might be. I want to read from the Dewberry Stormwater Report for the center area. That includes not only this area, but includes Cole's Branch and enclosed Walnut, which is downstream from all the massive downtown development. And what I'm reading isn't some out-of-contexter legalese. This is the bottom line of the executive summary of that report. It says, "The results from the existing and future condition analysis reveal significant portions of the existing drainage system in TSAP do not meet the desired level of service or the current design standards." The next sentence says, "Numerous areas show potential for roadway, property, and structural flooding, as well as other problems such as rota velocity as a result of the undersized system." Now, that's what we're seeing. I mean, I lost three feet of my property, had half my front yard erode away, and I know a lot of other people are seeing the same thing. This isn't coincidence, this isn't global warming, this isn't the worst storm in a thousand years. This has been getting worse and worse and worse. In the last three years, it's getting ridiculous. I go out in all the big storms, the last three this year, it was, the water was coming over the roadways, two-foot waves. It looked like Class II rapids. I stood and watched the family taken out of their home. They couldn't get out of their home, they had to be rescued by Cary Fire Department. But it's, I really believe it's worth, that report was 2006. This is a 1950s stormwater system, and that report in 2006 said it was grossly undersized. We know this, and not a single recommendation in that report. There were dozens of improvements, mostly open drainage work and culverts under the roads, which act as dams. They act as big dams, and they build up the water, so our homes are retention ponds for your high-density development, all because none of this was implemented. And of those dozens of recommendations, a total of $8 million, not that much money, you didn't approve one of them, not a single one of them. I mean, if you want to distribute this map, you can see one of the areas I picked, which is, one of the areas I picked and pulled out of that was this area right down here, and it shows the flooding upstream from the Maynard Road crossing over Swift Creek, Triptree That particular culvert is three to five times too small according to these engineers. Imagine, you had a triple or quadruple the size of this thing just to handle a 25- or 100-year stormwater event, which in the Town of Cary, we should be handling 100-year storm events. To be building stuff like this and force developers to meet a two-year storm requirement is not what we consider good design standards for the Town of Cary, and it's certainly not what we expect as property owners, who we are quite literally losing our property. First, you put this floodplain in place, then you say we can't build on it because of repairing buffers, then you tell us to get flood insurance, and then what they're doing north of this community is they're putting everybody on the FEMA floodplain. Now your house is worthless, you're paying thousands of dollars a year in flood insurance, this is going everywhere. So all I'm asking is, this little dam right here could have been fixed for $1 million or $1.1 million. That's what you bought a fountain for downtown. It would have saved a lot of these homes from being flooded, but it was ignored. So all I'm asking is, this goes forward, why I'm here, is this is an opportunity to rerun this study. We keep hearing there's no flooding issues, why not rerun the study? What is it, 100 grand, 150 grand to rerun the study? See what Dewberry says. After 11 years of more high-density development, after 11 years of pouring more water into our backyards, we're losing our yards, we're losing our property, and as Tony said, someone's going to get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Howard Manning. I come before you tonight as a Cary resident, a member of the three-year Cary Community Planning Team, a member of the Western Region Community Advisory Committee, and on behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff of Dorcas Ministries. Kevin mentioned that we had not heard in this process the force of any of those persons who might benefit from affordable housing. So while I can't speak directly for those persons, I can speak from our experience at Dorcas Ministries. Over the last two years, we have implemented what's called an emergency housing program, which basically we work with persons to get them able to afford housing. That is a key part of the puzzle, along with employment and education, that's missing in Cary, and that is a low inventory of affordable housing. So most of the time, if not all the time, when we get a family equipped to be a home buyer that has been residing in Cary, and I will say Marsfield, they have to move out of the area to really find affordable, stable housing. And take it, these are not transitional people, these are people that are working, these are people that have families, these are people that, when they are given the opportunity, become a big boost to our economic engine, as well as improving the quality of life in Cary, which is what we all want. So Mayor, I'm taking your advice really to heart. I'm not speaking just about Habitat. I am speaking about a systemic problem that we have, not just in Cary, but in Wake County, which is a low or non-existent inventory of affordable housing. Okay? And we have an opportunity to actually address that and make a change. Every unit of affordable housing that we build is a dwelling for a family or person that not only improves their lives, but improves the quality of our lives. I'll give you a good example. We've had some incidents at Dorcas Ministries lately that has required emergency responders. We also serve by Fire Station 4. Fire Station 4 is one-half mile or 10 minutes walking distance from Tremble Avenue. Last incidents, we had at Dorcas, just by through conversation, all the firefighters commented, "We love to live in Cary, the neighborhoods that we serve." Remember, a half-mile or 10-minutes walking distance, but we can't afford to. As a matter of fact, research shows that only about 30% of our employers that work for the Town of Cary can afford to live in Cary. 30% of the people that work for the Town of Cary can only afford to live in the Town of Cary. So I'm a part of also the Wake County Affordable Housing Steering Committee, and I'd like to leave you with this one thought that was shared at our last meeting, where we have about 32 stakeholders and subdramatic experts, and we were asked, "What do you see as a major barrier to meeting critical affordable housing needs in Wake County listed in order of greatest number of mentions?" Number one, overwhelming, was overcoming nimbyism with need to change community perceptions of affordable housing. So I plead with you now, not just to consider Tremble Avenue, not just to consider the Habitat for Humanity project, but what kind of impact can we have on the community that we live by providing affordable housing and in some cases, eliminating and preventing homelessness? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Next speaker, please.
My name is Norma Jones, and I live here in Cary 516 Wickham Place. If any of you are familiar with, that is the Habitat area, and I have my beautiful home here to show you. I got my house 13 years ago. I worked very hard to get this house. I'm a professional housekeeper. I've been working here in Cary for 20 years now. I used to rent here in Cary for $900 a month in a house that should have been condemned. When I went to the Town of Cary, they told me it should be condemned, but I said, "I need to live here. My business is here, and I want to live here because I grew up in this concrete city of New York." There was no opportunity to have a house in New York for my mother. I wanted to raise my two sons as a single mother in a house. So I worked hard, and I built my little business, and I finally made it here to Cary, and Cary to me was like Long Island, New York, and that was my dream, was to live in Long Island. And I, to me, this is Long Island and stuff, so my dream has come true, and Habitat made it come true. They realized how hard I worked at getting my life together so that I could afford this house, and they gave me the opportunity to get it. And all I want to say is, everyone, please have an open heart and an open mind. Every situation can be fixed, and everybody has the right, and it should be. The American dream is to have a home, not to have to live in ghettos and stuff. And I did it, I got out of New York, out of the projects, and people can do it here, too. So please consider that, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next speaker, please.
My name is Kevin Slankman. I'm also a resident of Cary, and I'm not against Habitat for Humanity, but let's just be smart about what we're doing. And I'm not against Habitat for Humanity, but let's just be smart about what we're doing. That's the only thing I want you guys to think about. We've already talked about stormwater, but let's connect the dots. There was a, folks in California were warned that they had a dam, a 738-foot dam in Orville, California, that needed to be repaired. They were notified 20 years ago. Dam may break open any minute now. So we have the same type of thing going on here. We had a 2006 Davis and Dewey Engineering Report that's been ignored. One of the things about the report, it recommended that the LDO be amended to require stormwater and downstream impact hydrological studies for every single project. You can look it up in the report. Right now, Swift Creek Tributary Number 7, which is the one that runs behind Trimble Avenue, gets to be running really hard. So you start having the deterioration of people's lands behind there. That's already been discussed. One other factor that we've discussed that seems to be getting ignored is I was here the first meeting, and we talked to them, asked if there was any traffic studies being done. We were told that that cost too much money, that they weren't doing a traffic study. That's when they were going to bring in Palmetto Avenue and connect. But still, I would think that we would stop and think about what we're doing because not only do we have cars going up and down there, we're going to have more cars. Even though we're down to nine units, we're still going to have more cars. We're going to also have children. So think about that. This is a safety issue. Along with the stormwater, traffic is a safety issue. It should be given a thought, given some thought about that. The other thing we're talking about, property rights. Over a period of time, your rights have been taken away. And not only that, as Ms. Speaker earlier said, not only are property rights being taken away, your property itself is being taken away with the stormwater. So again, let's start thinking about doing, not only serving Habitat for Humanity, but serving the people who already live here. And I think a lot of it is we get involved with something else that we forget about the people who live here. Your constituents live here in Cary now. They don't live in New York City. They don't live in New Jersey. They don't live in Boston, and they certainly don't live in Washington. We're here now. Just be smart about what we're doing. That's all that we're asking. All right? And we appreciate Habitat for changing a lot of this stuff they're doing. We really appreciate that. But again, that's all I'm asking for, you folks. Take those things into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for inviting me up to speak to you. Tucker Johnson, I live at 1212 Haddington Drive. I've been there for about 38 years. I guess a while ago, I started seeing these signs coming up in our yards, "No Trimble." I went, "No, I want Trimble." Just said, "No Trimble," and then there was a couple of signs that just said, "No." And so I, so I had to find out, well, what's going on here? And then somebody said they wanted to build some townhomes there, and they would be Habitat for Humanity homes. And I support Habitat for Humanity, certainly. It's a good organization. I'm not sure I like the idea of townhomes. It's, to me, when I saw the vision of Habitat Humanity, it was a family going around and helping to build that home with the community. And they helped to paint it, and it was a detached home. When I heard they might have to change the plan to detach homes, I supported a little bit more. I kind of go, "That's good. That's a movement that I kind of like." But as I look at the map, the development around this area gives me pause. Not the Habitat area that we're talking about or the new zoning. It's all the development on the other side of the railroad track, and it's that road. There's no bridge there. And occasionally, I have parked because I get my hair cut at the little shopping center that's across over there, and I have to walk underneath that bridge where the railroad is. And this little, cars zoom by there. And we've added cars after cars after cars after cars to this area. So this is not a statement to say, "Don't rezone this." It's more like some of these people say, "Let's be careful. Do we need a new bridge for that railroad?" And that's my thought was, that little intersection there is dangerous. The way we built it up and kind of ignored that area, there's no sidewalk, proper sidewalk to walk in, and children want to go to the little store and get a Coca-Cola. And I worry about if it's only one out of 1,000 children on one of 1,000 days, if one got hurt. I wouldn't like that. It's really what I came to say. Be careful about that little intersection in that road there. So this doesn't have anything to do about the rezoning. What it does about all the zoning you've done and all the property building we've been doing in this other area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Brinson. I reside at 1107 Medlin Drive. I'm here because I got a notice in the mail that said this meeting was happening, and I have property within at 800 feet of the rezoning proposed area on Trimble. And I want to let you know that there are citizens in that neighborhood that support this rezoning. I'm one of them. That's why I'm here. My neighborhood is wonderful because it's diverse. We have generational diversity. We have race diversity. We have ethnicity diversity. I'm going to assume we have religious diversity because I don't go around asking everybody what their religion is all the time. But we also clearly have political diversity because the signs in October, November, the yard signs certainly prove that. And we have diversity of opinion about this rezoning proposal. The former speaker was just talking about yard signs. There's about 50 houses on Medlin Drive. Eight of them have the "no" signs in them. That's about 15%. One has a clear sign that's positive about this. That leaves 80% of the people with no public-facing opinion. So not everybody's against it. Some of us are very much for it. I could ask a lot. What is affordable housing? There are all kinds of websites you can go to, papers you can read, none of which make any sense to me. To me, affordable housing is providing a way for people who work in the community to live in the community. We recently had a health scare at my house. We dialed 911. Firefighters and EMT people showed up. They were coming to save lives, if that's what was needed. Luckily, that's not what was needed, but those folks can't afford to live in my neighborhood. But they're willing to come save me. That kind of bothers me. Several of my neighbors worry that it will depress our property values. So I'm a data professional. I went researching. I crunched the numbers. I found everything I could on it. It's not going to depress our property values. The North Carolina Housing Coalition wrote a paper called "The Critical Information on the Issue of Affordable Housing," where it compiled 36 studies. It found that the vast majority found no impact at all on property values, and several found a positive impact. So I think this is a lot like living next door to somebody with a swimming pool in their backyard. Sometimes that makes your property really attractive to someone like my sister-in-law, who's dying to live next door to somebody with a pool. It's not good for me. I don't want to live next door. I don't want to live down the street. I would be happy if there were no more swimming pools. So everybody has a different opinion about that. Your property value is going to be in the eyes of the beholder. I did my own citizens assessment using the Cary Community Plan of 2040. And I found that Chapter 2, which was mentioned in the presentation, has a lot to say about the town's ongoing support for affordable housing, which I'm very proud of for living in Cary. Policy 5 speaks to residential infill, which is what we're talking about here. Needs to be context-sensitive. I think the current applicant is trying very hard to be context-sensitive. It also supports an increase of development intensity so that things can be affordable, so that the cost is not what it would be if you put one house on that large piece of land. Policy 6 also talks about objectives to encourage and support the provision of affordable housing. Number 2 talks about reasonable proportion. Savon Heights and Scottish Hills and Plantation Estates is about 1,200 homes. If we put in nine affordable houses, that's less than 1% of the entire neighborhood. We're clearly not swamping the neighborhood with affordable housing. It would be a small piece, but an important piece. Objective 8 talks about close proximity to conveniences, especially public transportation. There's a bus stop within walking distance of that property. I know because a resident of my household cuts through that empty lot right now to get to the bus stop. So he's using it quite a bit to find out that you can get around Cary and get to the grocery store, the drugstore, and maybe to a new job. So to sum up, affordable housing is very important to me because I want to improve the diversity of my neighborhood. I find that my friends and relatives that rent, they tend to ask, "Where do you stay?" That's how they talk. Homeowners say, "Where do you live?" That's a much more powerful statement. We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, must live together. We need to be as diverse as we can stand in any given place at any given time. I'd now like to ask folks that support the rezoning request to stand with me. We urge you to approve this rezoning request so that there can be affordable housing in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to our next speaker, I just want to take a moment to review what I've heard so far so we can reduce repetitive comments. We've heard more than once a requirement or a request for a traffic study to go beyond what was done in 2006. We, stormwater study and a traffic study. Heard that one, too. We've heard property loss from stormwater. We heard the need for Habitat homes. I would just remind you that this rezoning is not about Habitat. We heard a request for a bridge over railroad, a need for sidewalks, property building that we've been doing. Cary doesn't do property building unless it's on town property. The need for affordable housing multiple times, and the depression of property values. Those are the things we've heard, and all I would ask our speakers, if you can, please avoid repeating. Next speaker.
No pressure.
You could just say ditto.
My name is Jason Bailey.
Move to the left just a little bit.
My name is Jason Bailey. I live at 111 Medlin Drive. I'm a resident here for about five to six years. Moved to Cary. I really enjoy it. I like my neighborhood. I learned of this plan through a notice that was left on my mailbox, colorful language, alarming, I would say. And I am a fan of affordable housing. And I want to make sure, as the prior speaker made clear, that there are people here who appreciate it. And I am a fan of having people, higher density, having starter families. Last Halloween, I had three groups of children at my house. I would love to have more groups of children coming by my house. I would like to have children that my kids can go play and visit with. And that requires housing that people can afford when they are starting off. Funny enough, one of the things I liked most about this idea was that Palmetto extension. As somebody who leaves Medlin in the morning, any other possible route out of that neighborhood would be a fantastic thing to have. So if there is another thing that I don't have to say ditto to, it would be a possible reconsideration of that Palmetto extension. If anything, to allow the possibility of those young kids and families to have another way for my kids to get to. Ditto. I think everything else has been covered, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Reed Phillips. I'm at 215 Trimble Avenue, a adjacent property owner, and really appreciate being able to access to you guys and having conversations. I really appreciate that very much. I also really appreciate the willingness of Kevin, Rachel, Jim, the guys from Habitat, putting up with me during all of this and some of my not-so-appropriate behavior. Thanks, guys. And by the way, I hope that this is going to be such a cool development that'll shame me into actually improving stuff at my house. I really, really appreciate what's going to go on there. I know that we also, just through some surveys, have had over, I think we're up to over 300 hours of committed community service from the community to be able to support the people on site, to be able to work on this. Clearly, we were opposed to density, but we were supportive of the plan that's before us, and we hope to be able to help make that the best possible thing we can do. Before you, what I just put before you is that I assume that there's going to have to be sewer to this facility, and I believe it's going to come from in front of my house. There's four large oak trees that are about 15 to 18 feet from the curb. And all I would request is that if, as part of that process of putting in the sewer, if the roots are damaged or whatever, that somehow we can figure out how to appropriately remove damaged trees since they are kind of over some power lines as they approach the property. So if that occurs, I'm not sure how that works, but I would like to have some consideration for any expense that may be required. I understand you have an arborist, is that the right word, on your staff that could give some help in terms of what would be appropriate time that that would reflect itself in trees that may have root damage. I'm not an expert. I would have to rely on you guys for that. So that would be my request. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Scott Peters. I'm an 18-year resident of Cary. Been in Scottishield the last 12 years, live with my wife and two kids. I could use all my time here today to really talk about the things that I love about Cary, about my neighborhood and about my neighbors, but I am going to, I could use their time also, but I'm going to just keep it a little bit more concise. Specifically tonight, I've been asked to speak for a group of neighbors that have been involved in this process the entire time. We've been advocating for single-family detached homes from the beginning. And we've been knocking on doors. We've been having public conversations. We've been meeting with the developer, with town staff, with members of council, with the person, you know, running the trash truck if they'll listen. You know, anybody coming by like, "Hey, we'd like to talk to you about this because we're that passionate about our neighborhood." Have become a bit of a planner, I think, now, thanks to Katie and her staff. So expect to see an application with my name on it, you know. I'm just kidding. But, you know, it's an involved process, and I do want to thank members of staff and council for letting us be involved in this process, for letting us come and speak and really get informed and kind of get our nails dirty in what it takes, you know, for this type of thing to happen or not happen. As you can imagine, and first of all, I have to apologize. We both have to suffer through my handwritten notes at this point because, as you can imagine, I maybe had a different presentation planned before some of the changes that we heard from the applicant today. But I do want to still recognize the hard work of all the individuals and over 160 property owners in our surrounding neighborhood who have signed documents in support of keeping this a single-family detached development. And actually, I would like to invite anybody who has advocated for this from the beginning to please stand. If you are in support and always have been in support of single-family detached, thank you, everyone, for your hard work, consideration, and input into everything that we've done. I really, I wish we had gotten here on different terms. We've had wonderful conversations with Habitat, very cordial, very nice people. I believe in their mission. I wish we had gotten to this point, not on a technicality, but because they really wanted to listen to what we had to say. We all have different missions. I would ask that we still be involved in the plan moving forward. You know, now they're asking for single-family detached. We're asking for single-family detached. We put together what we think is a pretty good plan of how to accomplish that. We've even got some maps and some talking points. We want to relate how this has to do with our 20-year plan moving forward. I'm going to leave that here, and, you know, it may be germane now. It may not be, but we'll get copies out. We would like to be present and be able to be involved in how this moves forward. We would really like to ensure that the homes are of the quality, the build, the diversity that blend in, that make our neighborhood great, just like, as proud of the neighborhood as we've come to be. And that's really all I've got. Everything else is hit. And I appreciate, again, your time and being willing to have citizens involved in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Ann Dennis, and I live at 112 Trimble Avenue, which is the first house in the neighborhood as you turn off of West Chatham. And as such, I was the first one to notice that And as such, I was the first one to notice that the lot was for sale a little over a year ago. We moved here in 2005 from out-of-state, fell in love with the area, and we picked this home and this neighborhood due to the, hmm, due to the well-kept homes and pride of ownership that brings me as much joy now as it did when we bought here in 2005. We love the variety of architectural styles here, which is the opposite of the widespread cookie-cutter neighborhoods that are popping up all over, not only Cary, but the whole triangle. That was one of the things that attracted us the most, diversity and their different generations, some built in the 60s, 70s, 80s, and mine, mid-90s, which is now making it a heritage home, I believe. People tend to their properties, yards, with pride and consistency year after year. With an eye to the future of responsible infill goals that were put forth in the unanimously accepted Imagine Cary Plan, infill that will best meet the Town of Cary's vision and the existing neighborhoods will consist of homes that blend in with consistent density and visual continuity, as well as other, oh, in this heritage neighborhood, as well as others in existence here in Cary going forward. In summary, I wholeheartedly support the development of the land for single-family homes on similar-sized lots. I will stand in support of any applicant who puts forth such a proposal. I request council to reject rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm William Dennis, speaking for Don Elias, who is recently out of the hospital. I live at 112 Trimble Avenue, and he lives at 116 Trimble Avenue. And this is what he has to say about the rezoning. I moved from Wilmington, North Carolina, to my current neighborhood and address in early 1995. The Cary neighborhood was selected because it was within my budget, convenient to work, relatively near the airport, near the large city of Raleigh, and highly recommended. I was moving from an apartment, and it was ready, and I was ready for my new home. Having lived in my apartment for too long, I wanted detached, single-family home with a garage and an appealing neighborhood. I selected my Scottish Hills newly-built home location because of the community's wide variety of good-sized, well-built, and well-maintained, single-family detached homes. The homes were in a stable, established community on substantial lots with established greenery and mature shade trees. The lot sizes would allow me to enjoy my hobby of flower gardening. I have enjoyed living in a welcoming community ranging from young families to retirees with a wide range of educational, economic, and cultural backgrounds. I would like to see the existing, single-family detached home character of the neighborhood maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Dennis. I live at 112 Trimble Avenue. This is my opinion. My wife, Ann, said a lot of what I wanted to cover, so I don't have too much to add on top of that, except for the fact that I actually grew up in southeast LA in the 80s, so I know a little bit about that sort of thing. A couple personal things, since they call our house ground zero for the rezoning. When we first heard about the rezoning, it was, there was a lot of panic, a lot of fear erupted, a lot of information was tossed around, and there was a lot of fear in the neighborhood. And I was part of that. It actually nearly tore our family apart. It was really hard to deal with. But I realized by the January meeting that there was no reason to be afraid. What I needed to do was to get out and talk to people. So I hired an advisor, and I tried to figure out the language and what was going on. I'm not a developer. That night of the 12th, I spoke with the folks, the applicants who are interested in the development, and I got their opinions, point of view, one-on-one. And I scheduled some meetings with counselors. I apologize, I did miss one meeting with counselors, and it was because my son had the flu, I wasn't trying to ditch that meeting. But I gotta admit, there was one person who I thought I had nothing in common with, and that person gave me the best advice I think I've ever received in my life. And after that, I was no longer afraid. So I wrote this because I wasn't quite sure what was going to be presented tonight, but I just kind of want to put my fist down and say, I want to make it clear, I am no longer afraid. I oppose townhomes and patio homes. This other plan is new, I'll need to mull it over. But for townhomes and patio homes, it's non-negotiable. Okay? And I am at peace with that opinion. The way I looked at it was, it's like a real estate transaction. If the buyer is too low from a market price, or the seller is too high from a market price, that transaction can't happen. But in this case, how I feel is this is an intangible asset, which is the visual synchronicity of the neighborhood. And if that intangible asset is too far apart from the market tangible asset, then it's not a deal that should be going through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brent Miller. I'm a citizen of Cary. And I have a couple new things to add. I'll try not to repeat those things that have been said. I had the privilege of serving for six years on Cary's Planning and Zoning Board, and based on my experience and knowledge I gained there, I will amplify what the mayor said earlier, it's hard to look at just the what. The rezoning is what's before you and what will be before P and Z and becoming back to you, and not conflate that with the who or who the applicant is. That knowledge is there, and it's hard to divorce it. So I looked at that, and even before the conditions that were offered by the applicant tonight, it seemed to me that transitional residential conditional use made sense. A mix of townhomes and single-family seemed to make sense. It does seem to be appropriate and compatible with the neighboring, with the neighboring developments, and with the conditions tonight, that even reinforces that. I believe this is an entirely appropriate and compatible rezoning, limiting it to single-family homes. Another thing we learned on planning and zoning, and this goes back to stormwater, but I want to make a new point on that, is that when there is a new development, that applicant must maintain the stormwater that was runoff that results from that development on that site and not let it go anywhere else. I'll say it again, the development cannot make stormwater worse in the area. I know it seems counterintuitive, but Cary has a lot of foresight, and because of our stormwater regulations, which the applicant has committed to meet, any development here by anyone is not going to make things worse. There's obviously a legitimate problem in the area, but this development is not going to make stormwater worse, based on Cary's ordinances. Because affordable housing was mentioned, I think it is worthwhile to repeat that there is research that shows that many of the objections about crime and property values do not have a basis in fact. You can Google that on your computers in front of you right now, if you want to look up those scholarly articles. And then the last thing I'll say is, I don't live very close to this, but I do speak from experience. Within, at the end of the street, that is the Collector Street that goes into my neighborhood, within walking distance, a couple years ago, we had some affordable housing homes built. They are an asset to the neighborhood, the homes, the people are an asset to the neighborhood, a welcome to the community, and I hope we can welcome these homes and their owners to this community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Good evening. I'm Tyran Hill. I'm the local regional policy officer at the North Carolina Housing Coalition. Before, well, it was being passed around, our recently updated county profile, fact sheets that state the affordable housing needs in each county across the state. The North Carolina Housing Coalition is a membership organization of individuals and organizations across the state dedicating to ensure that every North Carolinian has a safe, decent, and affordable place to call home. When we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about a simple math problem. Plug in how much a family makes and how much their housing costs. Because housing is the first rung on the ladder of opportunity, when the cost is too high, it means it's challenging for families to climb the ladder, save for education, build equity, or improve health outcomes. As many of you know, Wake County is growing by an astounding 64 people a day. While many are attracted with the promise of high-paying jobs, this has put upward pressures on housing prices across the region. More than 100,000 families in Wake County are currently considered house burden, cost burden, meaning that they pay 30% or more of their income towards housing expenses. The Town of Cary has already recognized this need and has crafted a policy priority focused on creating a mixed housing within neighborhoods that can accommodate a variety of different types of households. A lack of ample affordable housing choices will put pressure not only on families' budgets, but on the community as a whole and their well-being. There is not a sufficient supply of affordable housing for many members of Cary's communities, and folks who work full-time jobs in Cary should have an opportunity to live where they work. This brings us to the proposal before council today. The challenge for local governments in North Carolina is that there are a limited number of tools available for creating a mix of housing in neighborhoods that can accommodate a variety of different types of households. In order to meet the goals set out in your 2040 plan, rare opportunities such as these cannot be overlooked or overlooked when presented. Two main tools that you have at your disposal are negotiating the sales of city land and negotiating affordability when rezoning is required. Density is key to the strategy, and the Housing Coalition encourages the council to approve the Habitat for Humanity of Wake County's rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Blagel. I reside at 1101 Balmoral Drive in Cary, which is one of the feeder streets that's not really, really highlighted there, but we come across where Trimble and Balmoral meet, about five houses away from that. I did have the privilege of going to one of the meetings at Beth Elbathus Church earlier to voice my concerns. I am pleased that now people have heard our request for single-family dwellings. I'm still concerned, if we look at the map up there, or the drawing up there, across the street from where the proposed site is, there's only about four or five single-family houses across the street, but yet, I thought I heard the number was going to be nine or 10, single-family homes. So I'm not really sure how that's going to fit in with the drawings, but that's not my problem to figure out. I know that there's going to be a subsequent meeting today, but I just questioned, not necessarily it being fuzzy math, but just, the single-family homes might not look like the other houses in the neighborhood, because I don't know how they're going to fit the same amount of houses on that property. I was told that HUD, who I absolutely support, one of the problems was that if we didn't have enough houses on the property, it wouldn't be, you know, appealing to them. I'm not sure that this property ever really had the time for other buyers or builders to consider maybe putting four or five houses on that property, or maybe more per house, but that the church kind of jumped on this bid when it came up. So I just wanted to voice that. And then, just real quickly, just because people did spend $20 to make a sign, doesn't mean that they agreed that this was a great project. I heard somebody else, I just want to clarify that in our points, that not everybody who bought a sign was for it or against it, and that's kind of crazy math, too, that just because only a certain amount of houses posted the sign, didn't mean that other people weren't necessarily very concerned and not in favor of this. As far as affordable other options within our neighborhood, again, I know that when I drive down Lake Pine, I see quite a few different houses, almost looking like connected apartments, as I first come off of Maynard. And then I know that there's some very, very small homes as you get closer to Cary Parkway within our, within our thing. I know that we also have Apple Cross, which is attached apartments, or, you know, so forth as a housing option. And my son is a proud owner of a condo in our area as well. So to make it sound like we only have castles in our small, little neighborhood, I think is an inappropriate judgment against us. Most of us live in a modest home that we could have barely afforded when we got in, but we rubbed our paychecks together, worked part-time jobs, to be able to afford to live in the neighborhood that we live. We just don't want to see the character of the neighborhood change. I'm glad it's back down to single-family homes. I still think there are too many, and I'd like the town to address that. And that's about it. I really appreciate your time and the support of the other citizens that are involved in voicing our concerns to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Bill McClellan. I live in the impact zone of this proposal. I've been to a number of meetings, and I've heard discussions about the needs of the church for money, and as a Christian, I support the church being able to get money for its missions and its programs. We've heard about stormwater runoff, flooding, about traffic, about the benefits of affordable housing. But I contend that these are all side issues, as far as the council is concerned. The primary issue, I think, that you should consider is, number one, is this project compatible with this neighborhood that's been in existence since 1960, almost 60 years ago? And number two, what do the people in this impact area, what do they want? And I've done an unofficial survey of the houses around me the last couple days, nine houses. Eight of the individuals were opposed to this rezoning, and one had no opinion. It's hard to believe in this day and age of Democrats and Republicans fighting continually that you find people with no opinion, but the individual had no opinion. So, the point is, the over, the majority of people in this impact area do not want the project, and I think the majority of people feel that this is not a compatible development with the existing neighborhood. So please consider these two issues as your primary decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Hector Escobar, and I live in the Scottish Hills, on, between 800 feet away from the lot. I was second-guessing myself about talking about certain things, but I decided to take a stand on this. And a lot of times, they mention over here about Cary not providing opportunity for affordable housing. Well, let me tell you my story about how I got to Cary. I used to live in New York, and my wife and my kids decided that we need to leave. We need to look for a better place to leave. Nobody came to my house, knocked on the door, and said, I'm going to give you an opportunity. I packed my bags, and I moved here. But before I moved here, I made several trips, and there were one that I went to Durham, and a few times I went to Durham, and I said, well, I think this is better than New York, where I used to live. But then somehow, I ended up in Cary, and I fell in love with Cary. And this was maybe 2004. So I finally was able to make the move in 2008. So I planned. I have a plan. It's not that the opportunity or the plan was given to me. I did sign my plan. So I rented an apartment, and I said, you know, we want to buy a house. We have worked hard all this time to save money to finally buy our dream home. So I started looking around and looking around, and I fell in love with Scottish Hills. Why? Because of the nature of the neighborhood. I love it. So I did start looking for a house that was for sale, and I missed on one on Highland Road. I was so disappointed. But when the second time came around, two years later, I, there was one house that came up on sale that was in Carnersley Circle, and I just jumped in. I got all, everything ready. I got my application in the bank, I got everything, I submitted all the paperwork, and I got into contract, because I didn't want to miss this house. So I really worked hard for it. Now, let me tell you something about me. I don't have a college degree. I have a high school diploma. I work for the school. I work in Cary. So what do I do? I have to work hard. Why? Because I have a dream. And my dream is I want to live in the Scottish Hills. So I'm asking the council, please, to consider the people who live in that neighborhood and take that into account, that, in their position, because we're going to be affected for one or the other reason. So I don't want to get into specifics, but I would say that for that people who say that Cary... that Cary doesn't provide affordable houses or doesn't provide opportunity, they do. They just need to work a little harder, like I did. That was my plan, and it worked. And you know what? I'm still working harder. I got my house, I love it, and I still work hard to keep it. So I want you to please consider us, the people who have worked hard, have our dreams and everything, because we are against anything that would change our neighbor. Every day after nights, after I work sixteen hours of work or fourteen hours, I enjoy putting it into my driveway. And I say, "You know what? This was worth it. I don't care how many hours I have to work, but this is my dream house, and every time I see my kids at my house, I enjoy it. And I don't care if I have to work and work and work to protect my neighborhood. So please consider our voice. Thank you. No rezoning."
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please do not applaud. Make remarks from your seats, please. Next speaker.
My name is Bryce McLennie. I live at ten twenty-six Medlin, which is the corner of Palmetto and Medlin. I'm adjacent to the property. It's basically my backyard is what we call the dog park now, which is the area of the rezoning. And first of all, I wanted to thank the applicant, my town council members, and my neighbors for working so hard together. I feel like many of our concerns have been taken into consideration here by the applicant. We wanted single-family homes. It sounds like that's the direction it's moving right now. I was ecstatic to hear that Palmetto wasn't required to be cut through. I know somebody stood up in support of that, but I want to reiterate, as the person that lives at that stub, it would be the quickest way to get from Tremble to Trader Joe's, and I know how people in Cary love their Trader Joe's, and I have a son to think about, so less traffic, the better at my corner. But I just, that was the one concern still hanging out there, is I heard someone in support of it, and I just wanted to kind of be the voice on the other side. But I do appreciate the applicant's working with us, and I do support the current proposal for nine single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is James Davis. I live in twelve thirteen Balmoral, which leads up to Tremble. I have a question to ask, and a proposal or suggestion based upon that answer to that question. Does not the current zoning for this property admit the building that they suggest, the development that they suggest? My computations are the nine houses, two and a half acres, that's over a quarter acre per house. Now, I'm a little bit confused as to what TRCU means, because this originally was proposed at R forty, or something like that. R forty is the existing proposal? Doesn't that...
Mr. Davis, we usually don't answer questions in public speaks out, I mean, in public hearings. However, I'll tell you that R forty is a placeholder. When you come into the town, you have to have a zoning. They give it R forty. And that's one-acre lots, and you don't see that built. But they have to propose something different unless they want to build one-acre lots. That's why you see that there. Please.
So the proposed zoning now would allow for a lot more to be built on it than nine houses. I therefore oppose this zoning.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Sharon Tobias. I live on Bellamy Court in Scottish Hills, and I really debated, because you have quite a list, and I don't want to do a ditto. You know, when we consider this, you said at the beginning that you really can't, you really need to separate rezoning and the applicant or the project from Habitat. I've been to the meeting in December, and I went to the meeting at the church in January, and I really sat at my seat, and as we come to the end here, mulling it over, and I just have a thought. It's really difficult to separate the two, because what we were told at the church was single-family detachment was impossible due to land acquisition cost. It's simple economics. And so as we consider rezoning, because of the land acquisition costs, we're looking for it to be denser than it matches the surrounding neighborhood. And I really think we have a duty to look at that, because this is a business decision, but we're the neighborhood, and it impacts somebody's business decision that's going to build something that is not, doesn't demonstrate the integrity of the neighborhood. Because you can interpret the Cary community plan, you can interpret it any way you want based on the argument you want to make. But somebody's business decision, we've never made this about affordable housing. All we've asked is that it resembled the character of the neighborhood, and through land acquisition cost, which we can go down that route, too, about grant money being used to pay a huge amount beyond tax value for a piece of land. And is that good stewardship of that grant money when it could acquire far more land in another location? You know, that's something to consider, because we get federal money, and we need to be good stewards of that money. And we're paying a pretty hefty price for a small tract of land when that hefty price could get land that's available in other places. But again, I just want to say, you can't separate the issues, because somebody's made a business decision. A church made a business decision, and an organization to build housing has made a business decision, and they made a choice to pay this kind of money for this land. And so there's choices from people that aren't involved in the neighborhood that are going to impact the neighborhood once it's done. Whether the concern about stormwater is real or not, it's easy to come in, build the development, and walk away, and then leave it to the people there to deal with the repercussions. And so I think tonight we've heard enough concerns that we do need to relook at, because I'm in favor of rezoning, but I think it should be R eight, just like the rest, the majority of the neighborhood. Because when you look at that map and you see what's R twenty and R forty, that's the nineteen sixties part of the neighborhood. The nineteen eighties part of the neighborhood is R eight. And I also beg to differ with the definition of this neighborhood as heritage, because if you look at when these houses were built, it went on past the early eighties. It is a hodgepodge. I have one of the smallest houses in the neighborhood, but that's what gives it the unique character. And we're just asking that this development, I'm looking at my light, this development continue to follow the unique character of this neighborhood and be set up that it's contiguous and something that we can all agree that maintains that character. So thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Ladies and gentlemen, please, please, this is a business meeting. I've asked you once before, please do not applaud. Please, I'm begging you, don't make us take action of any kind. Please do not applaud. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Kevin Leonard. I live probably within four hundred feet of this place on Palmetto Drive. Been living there for over twenty years, and so I have a very vested interest in this. Nowhere near as eloquent a speaker as the lady who just preceded me. I just want to say ditto. She stole almost every bit of my thunder. I came here to this meeting. I've been to many of the other meetings. The biggest concerns of mine, living on Palmetto, A, was the street being cut through, which it sounds like now it's not going to happen, and then secondarily, the multifamily housing being put into place, which does not match anything in the neighborhood, on all sides, on the Tremble neighborhood and our neighborhood and everything around it, from the church and a giant circle. I don't want to get in a philosophical discussion about what is affordable housing versus unaffordable housing. I think that the housing that should be in the neighborhood should be housing that matches other housing in the neighborhood. It's affordable to those of us who live there. I can't afford to live in Preston. Therefore, Preston is unaffordable housing for me. And I don't see these kinds of proposals being proposed for some of the empty land that I see in Preston. I doubt that that would go over very well. But this is supposed to be a rezoning hearing, not a hearing about whether the church has a right to sell the land to Habitat for Humanity. So I think that what I want to stick to is the rezoning part of it. I think that single-family houses are something that most people here could live with, as long as they're single-family homes that more or less match what's in the neighborhood, not cramming in a bunch of houses that somebody somewhere determines as affordable because they can't afford the other houses in the neighborhood. By the very definition of that concept, if that's the case, then the houses that get built in this neighborhood, in this tract that we're talking about, will depress the housing values. And I don't buy into the concept of studies that are done or statistics that are looked up, that affordable housing doesn't depress housing in the area, to quote somebody much smarter than me. There's lies, there's damn lies, and then there's statistics. And I would imagine that if you go and look at some of those statistics, you'll find that where a lot of affordable housing is put in is where other housing is at that is around the same value. We don't live, like I said, in Preston or some of the more high-flut neighborhoods in Cary, but we do live in a very nice neighborhood, and I think our biggest concern is, like the lady said before me, she nailed it on the head, the church makes a business decision, the Habitat for Humanity makes a business decision. They come and they build what they want, and then they're gone. They leave, and the rest of us have to deal with it. I've lived there for twenty years, and I really don't want to see my investment in the area be taken away from because of a decision here, especially on rezoning for multifamily, single-family to multifamily. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Nancy Blacker, and I live in the impact zone. Makes me feel like I'm in a war zone, and it kind of felt like that in here tonight somewhat. I am a volunteer for Habitat, and I have been for about a year now, and I think what all of us, I mean, one thing I'd like to put out to the council, we're all homeowners in here, I'd say, or I'm not going to say all, but I think the majority of us in here are homeowners. And I think maybe for some of you, it's been so long, you've forgotten the excitement and, you know, just the ability to be able to own your own home. I mean, I did it through the VA the first several times, and I think if you've never volunteered with Habitat, and I have feeling a small percentage of us here are, I mean, are the only volunteers with Habitat, you haven't seen the faces of those people who are in their first home ever. The one house we're working on right now, it's an elderly couple. Most of our families are younger, but this is an elderly couple, and it's just, this is their first house. So that's just something, like I said, not trying to say the same things over and over, but just, just think about the people who have an opportunity and would love an opportunity to be homeowners for the first time in their lives ever, and to have an opportunity that so many of us sort of take for granted in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Anyone else? I heard a voice. Is anyone else coming to speak? Seeing no one will close the public hearing and open it up to council members. I'm sorry.
No. She works class.
No, I don't think she wants to talk yet. She's here to help answer questions. So I do know that Councilmember George wants to start us off with this, so I'll recognize Mr. George.
I appreciate it, Mayor. I do love my neighborhood, and I do love Scottish Hills, and I'm proud to say, twenty-nine years ago, we moved there and raised our six kids, and we're proud sea lions. They all six went through the swim team there, and it's an important part, and I think I have my neighbors to help thank for how my kids turned out. I see some of my neighbors sitting here now, because even though they may have gotten in trouble with a few of the neighbors, the neighborhood kids, they stayed out of big trouble. I do want to separate this as well. It is hard to separate, because all we've heard from the beginning was Habitat. But I do want to separate from neighbors and thank my neighbors for all the time I've been able to spend with them in discussing this as far back as August, when it got pulled. I got questioned, and I went and met with somebody in their home, and I appreciate those people being here tonight to share their feelings. I think when I look to the density here, I know that there's a difference in the, Katie, I appreciate you being there, it's the difference in the TRCU with single-family with eight thousand minimum lots. It's still is different than what R eight would be because of setbacks and minimum lot dimensions. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So the base minimum lot size for TR is five thousand square foot lots, and they're proposing a condition to increase that to a minimum of eight thousand square foot, but they would still be able to use the setbacks that are allowed in the TR zoning district.
So it would match the size of the lots across the street on Tremble if it were...
In depth?
It would, in square footage. It would match in square footage, but it may not match in width. That's how we could get nine perhaps on roughly what may look like maybe five or six should fit in a typical R eight. Is that...
Yes, that's correct. The minimum lot width can be smaller with the TR, but with that condition, it would be the same lot area.
So it'll be a longer, skinnier lot, a taller, skinnier lot, which I can understand that. I understand about the stormwater. I understand we can't, there's no, it can't do more, dump water out more than it has to, than it currently does. It may even do less, because it'd be a pond to retain some, and right now it's a field that just kind of runs across the street. So I think that helps. I think there's something I do want to follow up on, and that will be, at a later time, we'll follow up on this stormwater report and what could have been done to stop some of this flooding, because I've visited these houses and seen the flood damage twice this year with the hundred-year or five-hundred-year floods, thousand-year floods, whatever they were. I think we need to address that. I appreciate everyone working together, because I believe there can be five wins out of this. I think we can have a win for Scottish Hills and Savon Heights, because it's, because we get homes that mimic what's in the neighborhood. The town of Cary can come out ahead. If Habitat winds up being the ones that develop the houses, it can be a win for them or whoever develops, whoever builds the houses. For the church to be able to use that land to do something else, I think it's a win, and it'll also be the biggest win when we get to welcome new people to Scottish Hills, because to me, it is the great place, and that's why, that we've never moved. That's why we've lived in the same house since we moved to Cary, and it's the only Cary address I've ever had, and I love it. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. George. Before I move to other council members, I want to float an idea, and the reason I'm speaking now is because I want to hear my colleagues' opinion on this. To change something at the table, which I really don't like, but in this case, it's moving in the right direction, I think we ought to consider continuing the public hearing and have the public come back and speak on that change at our next council meeting, rather than moving it to public, I mean, to planning and zoning, because I would like to hear their comments after they've, and I'm quoting, "Have a chance to mull it over," and after our audience has had a chance to think about single-family proposal, and come back and talk about that. We don't want to revisit, I've got about thirty things here, we don't want to revisit all of that, but I do want to hear your thoughts on what the applicant proposed at this meeting, and that would be my suggestion, but I want to hear my colleagues' thoughts on that, and then I have other things later to talk about. So who would like to go next?
Can I say logistically on that? So for the sake of the audience, if we don't continue it, they'll get to speak out at the P and Z, but not in front of us.
That's correct.
And if they change it, and they come back and speak in front of us, and we continue it, and they don't change it again, there won't be a public hearing.
That's correct.
So we'll actually have two of them, the same, we'll both have, they'll have two chances, but they'll both be in front of us if we continue it. The same number of chances to speak both times we get to hear. I'm definitely in favor of that.
Basically, you're not closing this public hearing, you're continuing it. So we're continuing the public hearing. We're not having another one, but we're continuing.
And please keep in mind that they can also make changes after the next public hearing that would trigger another public hearing.
Exactly, and if they do that, then there will be a public hearing at P and Z on that change.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure I understand, because if we do continue it, would there then also be a public hearing at P and Z again?
Not unless they change after. So consider this public hearing lasting for two weeks, or whenever the next council meeting is.
Right.
And we speak about all these changes, and I'll ask the town attorney in case I'm incorrect. If nothing else changes after we leave this public hearing, then that doesn't trigger a planning and zoning board public hearing. However, if we end this public hearing and they make a change, now that triggers a public hearing, or change from the application. So they're changing their application, and before we finish this public hearing, we'll have that application out to the public and everybody else, and they can speak on it, assuming we continue this public hearing. Clear as mud, right?
Well, no, I get it. It's, the thing is that they...
continue it and the affidavit is submitted within this time, is everything that the mayor just said following that there would not be a public hearing at the planning and zoning? I just want to make sure that what he's guessing is true.
Yes, I believe so.
Chris?
I'm sorry, I was trying to, Mayor, I'm, I was, I thought you had closed the public hearing.
Did you not when the--
No, not yet.
No, not yet.
You hadn't?
Oh, did you?
Oh, you did.
I think, did I?
Well, we can call for a second public hearing.
Yeah, that, when we just want to make sure that we have sufficient--
That was habit.
Notice it.
That wasn't the intention, but that was habit.
Okay.
Is Habitat?
So there will be--
No, that's not it.
So basically what you're saying is there will be a brand-new public hearing--
Oh, boy.
But you got new notice.
It would have to be noticed and--
Yep. I like our process, it's a tried and true.
Let, just let it go forward. If things change, it'll get here and people will have the opportunity to speak. Just let it go.
I respectfully disagree. Other colleagues?
Well, I was just going to ask about a technicality, but maybe we don't need to worry about that now if we're not really continuing, if we're going to start a new one. But if we were continuing, would the same people that spoke tonight be able to speak again?
I checked on that and that's to my discretion and of course, I would let them speak again because it'd be on something different. But since it's a new public hearing, everybody can speak again.
It doesn't matter.
Right.
Whether it's here or at P and Z.
That's right.
Well, there would have to be a P and Z notice of a new public hearing anyway, right?
If P and Z's to have a public hearing, there would have to be noticed, right?
They do have to--
Yes.
Yeah.
All public hearings have to be noticed.
So there would have to be a notice if we closed it, stopped and it went to P and Z, would, they'd have to be noticed for a P and Z public hearing again.
Not if you did another public hearing, right?
That's correct.
That's not where I'm getting it, because we closed, if we closed this one.
Right, that's what, but he suggests, so let's just talk about what's on the table.
Let's simplify this.
Thank you.
Technically, we close this public hearing. Our options are the regular process that goes to the planning and zoning board and if there are no changes, then there will be no public hearing. However, there are changes, so there would be a public hearing. However, if we instead hold another public hearing at council and there were no changes from that public hearing, there would be no public hearing at the planning and zoning board.
I'm in favor of that.
And what would be the impact from a scheduling perspective? Just wondering that everything would shift to, to the next planning and zoning board and all that, right?
Right, we'd have to look at rescheduling it to a council meeting that would give us enough time to, to renotice it so that we meet the requirements for noticing within, with enough time. And then planning and zoning board would probably be the month or the, the month even after that, after that second town council meeting.
Okay.
Can we not just let it, let Jack's suggested, go through his normal process, public hearing at the planning and zoning board? And then if citizens still feel the need to speak to council again, they have public speaks out?
We can certainly do that. That's why I brought it up, see if you guys want to do that or not.
And we listen to the planning and zoning board.
Oh, yeah.
We're not sitting there, but we'll, we'll listen to their, watch the meeting or listen to it afterwards so it isn't like something that's in a vacuum.
Well, and in reality, none of the folks that are here tonight have been shy at all. So, you know, when they've wanted to contact us and reach out and let us know their thoughts, they--
Nowhere to find.
They had absolutely nowhere to find us. So I appreciate the intent and the effort to hold a sec, another public hearing here. I'm just thinking from a logistical--
That's fine.
It just seems to cause problems.
Let's, let's move on to your issues. Now, I've got a bunch to talk about, I'm sure everybody is.
Could I just--
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. This project proposal that has come to us today is substantially different from what the citizens were reacting to before. If this had been tweaked slightly, I would say, yeah, move it on to P and Z and we'll, you know, we'll catch it on TV and we'll watch it and we'll see what happens. But this is a very different project now. It's almost as if it's a brand-new project, in my opinion. Some of the greatest objections that people had might be addressed by this, but we don't know because they didn't have time to absorb it. So people were trying to modify their notes at the last minute and try to collect their thoughts on something that they just saw. I personally think it would be appropriate to open a second public hearing at our next meeting and delay this. That's just my opinion. So I think I have to make a motion or some, I'll make a motion that we call for a second public hearing.
You're making that now?
I am making that now.
All right.
And see if it flies, if not.
Okay, we'll put it to bed one way or the other. There's a motion--
A second.
And a second discussion.
Right. And for everything that you said, to me is the powerful argument not to do that because if the applicant is going to make those significant changes, then they have to have a public hearing at P and Z. They have to. And then we'll have the P and Z recommendation, we will have heard those that have absorbed these changes because they are significant. If they were minor, you know, it's a different thing. But this is so obviously different and it'll have to be a public hearing at P and Z and, and then it comes back. This is rocket science. I mean, we kind of know what the issues are and I think it's great that they're willing to make that change and let the public hearing happen as, as planned, you know, at P and Z.
Yeah, I would just like to speak on that as well. I think one of the things that Gail gave us when she was at the table was a commitment to process, right? And I think, and we have had things that come to council that are significantly different by the time they go to P and Z and they've even changed sometimes between P and Z and what we end up doing is kicking it back if there's a change there. So I actually, shockingly, agree with Jack. I think that the process normally is, you know, the process works. I'm trying to figure out what the problem is we're trying to solve. We're not stopping in any way, shape or form constituents' ability and citizens' ability to speak. In fact, if anything, I think it's incumbent upon the applicant and town staff to really work hard to showcase what's different, right? I want to see, as an example, I want to see what's difference between TR CU and R8. I want to see very detailed, what are the setbacks? What are they getting? What are they not getting? I'd like to see the applicant showcase, how does this look, you know, for, for the residents in the neighborhood? I actually think exactly what Jack said, this is the way the process works and then they get another opportunity to come back to us, where public speak out. So that's why the process is there, to give them the most opportunity and they get to speak again without the mayor having to say, yeah, I think it's okay for you to speak. They, they have absolutely every right to speak out.
Yeah, I think we're unanimous in we want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. I mean, absolutely. We're just dealing with a process question here, but don't, don't misread me in any way. I mean, I want to make sure everybody's voice is heard. I just think the way we do things, it will be heard. It's that simple for me. I'm going to be sitting at this table every other Thursday anyways. I don't know that I care one way or the other, what's on the agenda or what isn't. So, I mean, whatever, whatever the greater, or the majority wants to do, I'm fine with. Everybody makes good points.
If, yeah, they're both good, good points on both sides. If this moves on without a second hearing here, you citizens can also come and speak to us at the public speaks out portion of our agenda. You don't have five minutes, you only have three minutes, but you can still address us if you feel compelled to let us know directly how you're feeling about the modifications.
Or call, email, or stop by the shop. That's what everybody does.
And, and ditto. Ditto.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to that next public hearing. I frankly don't care where it is, whether it's at P and Z or here.
Yeah, I agree.
And when I don't care and I, they do have the opportunity to catch us in a number of other ways, I say stick with the process and, and move it on to P and Z.
Looks like we're going down in flames, Jennifer.
Well, take the vote anyway.
All right. All in favor of the motion to hold another public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
I do oppose.
No.
Motion fails four to three. All right. Issues, comments, questions before we send this to P and Z.
Well, I have a thank you. I mean, this is, I've only seen our, our room filled once before with this many people and it's really refreshing to see so many people engaged and standing up for what they believe in. And we heard from people with opinions on all sides of this issue, but it was great to hear everybody here. I really appreciate you coming out, spending your night with us and-- I enjoyed it, I thought it was great and I, and so just thank you.
And I hope they all go home and still remain great neighbors.
Other, other comments?
I enjoyed this very much.
I did, yeah.
Listening to everyone.
Y'all need to move to my neighborhood is what you need to do.
Yeah, I think maybe.
We can have affordable housing.
Yeah, one of the things that, one of the things that just struck me the most in, in trying to strike the balance between these perspectives is I just think part of what Cary is good about and great about is harmony. And I, I just look very seriously at how things blend in a neighborhood and, and when you, as we deal with internal issues, this is what we're always dealing with, this issue where we're now trying to force fit something in that is by density, just not a good fit. And to me, the harmony and the fit is going to be more important than some philosophical philosophy on what we're supposed to do here in Cary. So-- I heard, heard a lot of different opinions, thoughts and concerns and I can't say I disagreed with any of them. I think everybody had good comments, good points, legitimate concerns, good input, good feedback. So I think that helps as this moves through the process and I think we'll, you know, should it work towards a positive outcome for, it will make a better product. So I applaud Habitat and the applicant for their willingness to make changes both before tonight's meeting and at tonight's meeting. I think when this started, it was 23 units, then it went down to 15, now we're down to nine. I mean, it's, it shows the applicant hears the neighbors' concerns and is willing to adjust accordingly. And I think also that the church has a little bit to do with that, so I thank them as well. So stay engaged, stay a part of the process. My number one issue, I think, is everybody else's is going to be compatibility, you know, how does this fit with this surrounding community and what does this look like and, you know, making sure that you don't drive in the neighborhood and go, whoa, what the heck is that? And then everything else is just single-family homes. So that's kind of what I'm looking for. It seems to be the road we're heading down. I look forward to seeing what this looks like when it comes back.
Ditto.
Besides hearing, a new public hearing, I need to mull this over myself. The first time, I think, most of us heard these conditions tonight.
Sure.
And not only do we need to, want to hear the public hearing at the planning and zoning board, I want to hear our planning and zoning board's response to this as well. I know certainly I'll be studying this as it goes along in terms of one of the goals of our Cary community plan, which says protect existing neighborhoods. And that's going to mean a lot to me as, as it goes forward. But in the meantime, just as Don said, I think the applicant needs to continue to stay in touch with, with the neighborhood. I think they want to see things a little more tangibly and so do I. And one thing that may not have to do with the rezoning, the stormwater issue in general, that's one thing I would like from our staff, if they could give us some advice concerning a stormwater study. I brought that up at our retreat and I know it's down there on paper and I know you're going to be doing it, but maybe it needs to be done sooner rather than later. So I would like to get some more information on that.
And actually, I have a, a list of things, that was the number one thing, is if we have a contact point for that neighborhood, let's answer the questions that they're asking about stormwater. When was the last time we did a study? Why? Why not? How much is it going to cost? When are we going to do it? That kind of stuff. And one thing I heard, and now my list of things that I heard, one thing I heard is a moratorium until a study's completed. While we would like to do moratoriums, we don't have that authority. So just in case you're wondering, we can't do that, even if we wanted to. Another thing I heard was bridge over the railroad track that requires DOT, NC DOT rail approval and millions of dollars. So the likelihood of that happening, and by the way, we're, we've got one bridge being built over railroad now that we've been planning, how many years? Many, many years. So don't hold your breath on a bridge over railroad track. Another one is sidewalks. We do, we build sidewalks based on citizens' requests. If you have a sidewalk you want built, make sure you request it and get it on the list and then it, there's a set of criteria that comes into play and they'll be ranked and eventually it will get built. Another thing was the property building, I think there was misunderstanding about a couple of speakers, that the town forces development or the town creates a type of development. A town creates a plan and then proposals come in by the property owners and they can apply for affordable housing. And I think that's where the confusion is, the town's not pushing affordable housing there, but the applicant has applied for affordable housing. So there, just to be, every, sure everybody understands that the town is not pushing affordable housing at that, that particular site. Another one is the stormwater regulations. It's important to understand also that when I was on planning and zoning board in 1997, they allow the houses or lots to be in floodplains. It was allowed. So you're talking about older houses, yeah, they built them in floodplains and that's part of the reason that you have flooding in some of these housing. And then over the years, they didn't have stormwater control as they do today and that exacerbated the problem. And then we've had rain events, which you're well aware of. Those are all contributing to the problems that you're seeing. So we're, we're going to find out more, the, the town manager's clear on this and he's going to get us some more information about stormwater. We do have a stormwater policy where we address really acute issues and that's in place already. And that has very limited funding.
Just with one, I'm sending out the notice now, but to, just with one caveat is we'll try to have the issue of stormwater be as specific to this area as possible, but as I know you know, Mayor, and just for the benefit of those in the audience, it's an incredibly complicated issue that has lots of moving parts. And so just wanted to make sure that was said as we begin this journey to find out how we can pull this together for this item.
And lastly, I want to repeat, even though I asked you not to repeat, but I want to repeat, I want to repeat that you can contact us anytime and, and I sincerely mean that. If you have a question, don't let it go unanswered. If I can't answer it, the town manager and his staff can. It might not be the answer you want to hear, but we can get you the answer. So don't hesitate to contact any of us and we'll get you answers. Anything else, council member?
Just the guy that came up and said there were lies, damn lies and statistics, it was Mark Twain. That's who said it.
Mark Twain.
How important do you know that?
The only, the only thing I would--
Jack knew him personally.
Jack, yeah, Jack, he told you that, didn't he, Jack?
Yeah. A number of us were not on the council in 2006, which was the year this stormwater flood study was referenced. I'd like to know more about that. I think a couple were, but I think the majority of us were not, so I would like to better understand that.
Okay. Anything else? All right, this will go to the planning and zoning board. There will be a public hearing at the planning and zoning board.
Even if they make the changes they promised.
If they submit the changes they said they're going to submit, which I believe them. Do you have any idea when that might be? Will that be at the March meeting or the April?
April 17.
April 17 will be a public hearing at the planning and zoning board, it'll be in this room at six o'clock?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Six thirty in this room, April 17. That's it. Thank you for being here and I really appreciate your interest in this issue. So we're going to take a five-minute break and when we come back, we'll hit our discussion items.[1693.52] That's it. Thank you for being here, and I really appreciate your interest in this issue. So we're going to take a five-minute break, and when we come back, we'll hit our discussion items. We'll reconvene our council meeting at this time, and we'll move to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is a lease with Wake County Public School System for a Greenway Trailhead. Mr. McRaney will present this item, and council may take action. Mr. McRaney.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting council approval of a proposed lease with Wake County Public Schools for a trailhead that will link with the White Oak Creek Greenway. The location of the trailhead will be at Green Level High School, which is currently under construction and is scheduled to open the fall of 2017. In 2008, staff from Cary, Wake County Public School System, and Wake County itself worked jointly to identify property suitable for a high school located south of White Oak Creek at the intersection of Green Level Church Road and Roberts Road. This is the master plan for Green Level High School, and here is a photo of the high school that's under construction. And the master plan also includes a future 55-acre park. And the park is currently owned by the town, and at this time, we don't have a schedule for when the park will be constructed. On the north side of the high school is, of course, the White Oak Creek Greenway, and the greenway extends from Bond Park to Green Level Church Road, a distance of five miles. Along the western edge of Green Level High School will be the trailhead, which will also provide linkage then to the White Oak Creek Greenway. In terms of the lease, it is 4.3 acres. On that lease will be a 20-to-30-car parking lot with a future restroom, and the town will be responsible for the design, construction, renovation, and ongoing maintenance of the parking lot. The trailhead will be accessible by the public at all times. Students will not be allowed to park during school days.
Good luck.
And once the lease has been approved, the design of the trailhead will begin here, hopefully shortly. Construction of the trailhead should occur the summer of 2018, and funding has already been approved for the construction of the trailhead. This is the planned view of the trailhead. Here is a view of where the trailhead will be located, with the high school, again, currently under construction. And here's a view of the bridge the DOT built in 2013 that extends over White Oak Creek. And I just want to compliment staff and also say that this entire project is a really good representation of government at its best in terms of the partnership with Wake County Public Schools, Wake County, the town, in terms of identifying the site, developing the master plan for the park, for the high school, along with locating the park. And then, of course, even this project here, which we partnered with NC DOT. So over a span of eight years, collectively, all these different government agencies worked together to help produce this project. Last slide is, or really, the last remaining aspect of this whole project is the last two miles of White Oak Creek Greenway. This is two miles, which would extend west of Green Level Church Road to finally connect up the White Oak Creek Greenway to the American Tobacco Trail. Funding has been secured, and construction is supposed to, it should occur at some point here in 2017, or should start in 2017. And so with that, you know, council's asking, our staff is asking for council to adopt the attached resolution and authorize the town manager to execute the lease. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McRaney. Sounds exciting to me. Questions?
It sounds great. I just don't know how we're going to keep students from parking there. Do you have a plan? I'm just asking.
That's what the lease says, and we'll do our best to. I mean, we do it at Middle Creek, which is even harder, at the community center. And we'll work closely with Wake County Public School System to manage that lot. So I hear you. I had to say it, though. It's in the agreement.
Other questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution and authorize the town manager to execute the lease.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McRaney.
Thank you, council.
We now move to our second discussion item, request for waiver of the waiting period for subsequent rezoning application. Kadari property, Mrs. Beerman will present this item. Council may take action. As a reminder to council and the audience, this item requires a supermajority of affirmative votes, which is six, to approve. I'm checking with the town clerk. She knows everything. Council is only, council is only considering the waiver tonight. This does not, not the merits of the project. That will come back at a future meeting and a rezoning at a later date. So we're just talking about whether or not to allow them to have a second try at this. Ms. Beerman.
Good evening, mayor and council. This property is located on Bachelor Road and Pine Rail Lane. It's about 21 acres. The original rezoning, case 16REZ03 Kadari Property, was approved on June 27 of 2016. So with that one-year waiting period, unless a waiver is granted, they would have to wait until July to resubmit. At that time, the property was zoned to R40 conditional use in Conservation Residential Overlay District. Detached dwellings are the only land use that's permitted, the maximum density of 1.5 units per acre, and that could, density could be achieved with clustering per the Conservation Residential Overlay District. Also, at the time when this rezoning was approved, the land use plan limited the maximum density to 1.5 units per acre. With the adoption of the Cary Community Plan, a higher density could be considered, and staff does recommend the waiver of the waiting period. Here you can see the, in this purple line, the location of the property in question. This property is in the Green Levels special planning area. The portion of that, the specific portion being the neighborhood's west of Flat Branch, which you see in the light green. Within that area, the aggregate growth density that the plan allows is, would be up to 2.5 units per acre area-wide. The predominant use in the area being detached dwellings, and the plan would support lot sizes generally about a quarter acre, that's 10 to 12,000 square feet, with smaller lots possible if the lots are clustered with additional open space. The plan also could support other housing types in smaller pockets or other uses. So here is the subject of the request, the Kadari property in this location. There has also been a rezoning case submitted on the adjacent property, 16REZ20, which is adjacent in this area. That rezoning case was submitted in July of 2016. A neighborhood meeting was held in September, but the public hearing has not yet been held on that property. So that has not been before you yet. The current request for that zoning case is also R40 conditional use with detached dwellings and the density limited to 1.5 units per acre, along with that Conservation Residential Overlay District. The applicant has submitted the waiver request in order to have the opportunity to combine these two zoning cases into one larger case, to basically expand the pending rezoning case to include the Kadari property that was rezoned last year. In doing this, they could request a residential district other than R40 and propose additional zoning conditions consistent with the current land use plan, the Cary Community Plan. Also, by expanding this area, a traffic study would be required based on the larger development area and the development potential. And also, in doing this, we would start the process over completely with a new neighborhood Council may waive the one-year waiting period if there's substantial changes to one or more aspects of the subsequent rezoning request. We do recommend approval of the waiver for the waiting period based on several changes. This would be an assembly of a larger area for development. There are more options for developing a street network through this area. Also, there would be a requirement for a traffic study, where neither case individually required a traffic study. And also, the applicant would have the ability to propose a wider, a change, to have a wider range of residential density consistent with the Cary Community Plan. And as you mentioned, an affirmative vote of three-quarters of council is required to grant the waiver. So that concludes my comments. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Beerman? Comments?
No, I just have a comment. I think this is a great idea, because one of the things that this council has consistently been concerned about are that small parcels come in, and we never get a chance to really have a traffic study done on this. So with an assembly like this, we get a traffic study out of it, and I think, from my perspective, that's just, that's a win-win right there. Go ahead. Well, I'll just make a motion, and then you can speak to it after, or you make a motion that we move forward to waive the one-year waiting period? Second?
Is a motion and a second.
I was just going to say that it also provides for a more cohesive and comprehensive development opportunity versus a single.
Yeah, great point.
Fewer streets that say future road connector here.
Possibly.
Would actually possibly go through. I would like to clarify something, because I saw that, you know, they're going to start over again with a new neighborhood meeting, right? So that means that they may make, this whole group may make a different proposal when they come back. Like, if we let them, it can come back somehow and start over?
Yes.
With new conditions, with different conditions?
There would be, there, more than, well, there would be likely a change to the zoning district that's requested, as well as any condition. So they basically, essentially would be, would be changing the request that's in process now. Without this waiver, they would not be able to include this additional property within that request, but they would be essentially starting over.
So I noticed within that, because of the Cary Community Plan and how this, it looks like, they both... like, they both had proposed one and a half detached units per acre before, but the, under the Cary Community Plan, it allows two and a half.
The Cary Community Plan allows two and a half area wide, within that portion of the special.
So it's possible that the assembly could come back and actually have even more houses than the one that proposed the first time with one and a half per acre?
Right.
Okay.
Under, under the old, and this was one area where under the previous land use plan, the density cap was lower.
So this will also enable them to come into the Cary Community Plan and have a higher density?
Yes.
Could also provide for the opportunity to preserve greater amounts of open space.
With the clustering.
Clustering.
Yes.
Right.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. We now move to our third discussion item, ordinance amendment, chapter 20 of the Cary Code of Ordinances, towing from private lots. Our police chief, Mr. Godwin, will introduce this item, and Captain Wilkins will present a report. Council may take action. As a reminder to council, this requires five affirmative votes to approve. Chief Godwin.
Good evening, council. The next item for consideration is an amendment to the ordinances designed to better regulate non-consensual towing. I'm soaking for a moment. This is an item that arose from a number of citizen complaints about encounters with some tow operators when they had their vehicles towed from private lots due to inappropriate parking. Historically, when our officers have been called to these scenes, we have had very little authority to help mitigate these matters. It has largely been strictly a civil issue that has created significant angst and the potential for physical altercation. The town took a measured and deliberate approach to researching the existing state law, other town ordinances, court cases on the issue, and held two independent forums with tow operators to discuss the merits of potential ordinance amendments. The recommendations before you represent our intent to regulate those things that we can control, such as signage, methods of payment, and citizens' ability to retrieve their vehicle in a timely manner, while avoiding those things that we cannot regulate per state law, most significantly, the fees that are charged by the tow companies in these situations. Captain Steve Wilkins worked closely with our legal staff in drafting these amendments. This proposal represents our best attempt to mitigate the concerns of all concerned, the citizens, the private property owners, and the business owners. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Captain Wilkins, so he can cover the final points of the amendments.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, council. As chief mentioned, our goal with the writing of this ordinance was to produce a rule that will be useful to all parties involved, to our property owners, to our drivers, to our towing businesses. And the first part of that process is to ensure that all properties affected, those that will be designated as towaway zones or are designated as towaway zones, are properly and reasonably posted. We believe it's important for all drivers to know, or to at least have a reasonable opportunity to know, if they are parking in a towaway zone. And for businesses or property owners having the appropriate signage, that helps ensure that parking is available to those who are entitled to use that parking area. As such, our proposed ordinance designates three types of parking warning signs, and I'll draw your attention to the slide shown. Now, let me say, these signs that we see on our slide, they don't necessarily meet the content criteria that we will talk about in just a second, but they do illustrate our three signage location types. Now, the first sign on your left of your screen is what we would call an entrance sign. An entrance sign is one that's prominently displayed at each entrance to a private parking area. This type of sign gives drivers an immediate opportunity to realize if they're parking in an area that is a potential towaway zone. Such a sign or signs may be beneficial for property owners wishing to post an entire parking area as a no parking zone. The middle sign you see on your screen is what we would call a frontage sign. Frontage signs are often posted in areas where there may be no clear curb or access barriers. So frontage signs would be useful if we were designating a specific portion of maybe a larger parking area, or maybe an area where the actual entrances may belong to somebody else. So frontage signs must be used every 50 feet along the frontage of the private parking area, depending on how big we want that area to be, or the property owner wants that area to be. Our third sign would be the individual parking space sign, like you might see an example of on the, on the right of the screen. These signs may be posted on individual parking spaces from which unauthorized vehicles would be towed, or could be towed. Parking signs are useful to property owners wishing to restrict parking in smaller areas. Maybe the property owner shares a parking lot with another business, or maybe they wish to reserve a parking spot for the boss or the employee of the month, or for some other personal reason. The parking sign, space sign lets them designate individual parking slots as a towaway zone. Our proposed ordinance requires that each of our three types of signs meet certain content criteria. Entrance and frontage signs must be at least 24 inches by 24 inches, not exceed six square feet. They must have letters, an inch and a half tall, contrasting colored background, be four to five feet above the ground. Individual parking space signs can be a little smaller, at least 12 inches by 18 inches. And the wording on the signs must be very specific, because we talked about, we want people to understand where they're parking. We want these signs to be as clear as possible for motorists to understand. Signs may say, must say towaway zone, towing enforced, or something similar. They must also indicate that authorized parking, unauthorized parking is prohibited by words such as private parking, parking for customers only, parking for residents only, whatever applies. It should be clear to drivers that parking restrictions are in play in these areas. So depending on the needs of the property owner, towaway signs must designate, also designate, the days and the times that towing is in effect. For example, a sign may designate a 24-hour enforcement area, or it may designate restricted parking only on nights or weekends, depending on the needs of the property owner. But in every case, a towaway sign must clearly display the times that are, the towing would be enforced. Property owners sometimes encounter the scenario where maybe the driver parks on their lot and stops by for a short visit, but then walks away and leaves the vehicle behind. Maybe the driver runs in just long enough to get a drink, but then goes elsewhere, leaves the car behind, takes advantage of the property owner's parking. Some businesses or property owners may be okay with that, others may not. So if this type of scenario is a concern, and if the property owner intends to tow those cars, their signs, their towaway signs need to say that. We will want those signs to say, if you leave this property, your vehicle may be towed, or something similar. Again, we want to avoid surprises for unsuspecting motorists and focus on drivers who may be trying to take advantage of property owners' parking areas. So naturally, towaway signs must clearly display the name and phone number of the towing service responsible for removing cars. And signs must also display on-site release requirements. In the event that a vehicle owner steps out to find a tow truck backed up to their car initiating a tow, that vehicle owner will be allowed by our ordinance to request that the vehicle be released right there upon payment of a release fee. And tow truck operators will be required to release such vehicles upon payment by the vehicle owner or operator of the car, and we're going to talk more about that in just a second. So if we look at our next slide, that is a couple of photos from our communication center taken just recently. And that leads us into the next portion of our ordinance, which is notification of the police department. The police department has experienced many scenarios in which vehicle owners have called 911 to report their car stolen, only for the police to arrive and find out they weren't stolen, they were towed. That happens quite often. So under our proposed ordinance, any towing service that engages in a non-consensual tow must notify the police department within 15 minutes of removing the vehicle.
Well, that's nice.
Tow operators will be required to provide our communication center with a description of the tow vehicle, car's license plate and number, where they towed the car from, where they're going to tow the car to. And that way, when the vehicle owners come out and they call 911, we can help them recover their vehicles. We'll have that information available. So on our next slide, let's talk just a little bit about response time. So towing and storage companies will be required, under our new ordinance, to maintain a phone to receive calls from vehicles. And they must have a live person available to answer that telephone, or if they have voicemail, the person can leave a voicemail, but they should expect a return call within 30 minutes of leaving that voicemail. And once contact is made, our vehicle owners, who may make a request to pick up a car to store as a lot, the tow company must have someone available to respond to the tow lot within two hours of the request. The responding employee must have the authority and the ability to release the car upon payment of the fees, and to keep recovery requests reasonable for our tow company owners and operators. We have included an exception in this rule of our ordinance. So for any vehicle recovery request that is made between midnight and 6:00 AM, so if that request comes in more than two hours after the car has been towed, the tow company can hold the car until 8:00 in the morning, that morning. So if the car was towed during that period from midnight to 6:00 AM, and the request to release the car is received within two hours of the tow, then they have to release the vehicle within the two-hour period. So that keeps our, you know, keeps people from waking up, our tow operators needlessly in the middle of the night if their car was towed yesterday or two days ago, that type of scenario. Okay? And our next slide, we'll talk a little about receipts. Our proposed ordinance will require that vehicle owners are provided with a receipt for their payment. These towing receipts must display the name, address, and phone number of the towing company. The receipt must also provide sufficient information that the actual towing employee can be identified. Receipts must provide a breakdown of any towing and storage fees, and it must list a clear and accurate reason for the tow, including the date and the time the tow occurred. So we also felt it was important to have included in the new ordinance a requirement that tow companies not use language or descriptions in their receipts that might confuse vehicle owners to associate the towing of their vehicle with any town of Cary municipal action. And then next, we'll talk a little bit about payment, and this was a very important piece of our proposed ordinance. And what we'd like to do here is to require tow companies who engage in non-consensual towing activities to accept multiple forms of payment for their services. So currently, there are no such requirements in place, and some tow companies accept only cash payment for the return of vehicles. We believe that practice is problematic for drivers who may not be prepared to pay large cash fees on short notice. Non-consensual towing sometimes happens late at night, it happens on weekends, when vehicle owners may not have access to the bank, there may not be an ATM nearby, or the fees may exceed the cash an ATM will provide. So cash-only business practices can result in stranded motorists, additional storage charges, and even altercations between vehicle owners and tow company employees. The regulation of minimum payment methods by municipalities has been specifically approved in North Carolina case law, and we believe this is an important part of our ordinance. So to comply with the new ordinance, tow companies will be required to accept cash, either MasterCard or Visa, plus one additional nationally-recognized credit or debit card. Nationally-recognized cards would include other names such as Visa, MasterCard, American Express, Discover. So that gives, that gives people some options to pay for the recovery of their vehicles. Now, we'd like to point out that our payment requirement regulates only the method of payment, and not the fees, the fee limits, the fee schedules, because it turns out that the same case law that allows us to regulate the methods of payment specifically prohibits us from regulating fees. So tow companies will remain free to establish their own fee schedules, storage fee amounts, and even charge additional fees to those deciding to pay by credit. And on our next slide, we touched on this briefly just a second ago, we were talking about signage, but occasionally, vehicle owners return to their cars after tow operators have initiated their work, but before the tow truck drives away with the car. So the police department recognizes that this scenario can be, you know, stressful and emotional encounter between vehicle owners and tow truck drivers. So that said, once a tow has been initiated by the positioning of a tow truck, the application of a hook or cable or other device, the work of that tow truck driver is already underway, and compensation is likely due. But in lieu of allowing an unnecessary removal of that vehicle by towing, our ordinance will require that tow operators release those vehicles on-site upon payment of a release fee. At the vehicle owner's request, the vehicle must be released on-site upon payment. Additionally, our ordinance will require that tow operators allow vehicle owners or they're designated to access their vehicle for the purpose of retrieving any personal property that may be inside the vehicle, and that's whether they intend to recover the vehicle right then or recover it later. So we'll talk just a second about storage lots as we sort of near the end of our presentation, which is also an important part of our non-consensual ordinance and an important part of the non-consensual towing business. The new ordinance will allow that vehicles towed under this policy may be transported a maximum of 15 miles from the location they're towed. Now, we don't have a map here, but if you were to look at a map of the Cary area, 15 miles will take you north as far as Falls Lake, it'll take you west to Jordan Lake, it'll take you south all the way to Fuqua Verena from here, from downtown, and it'll take you east all the way to Niddell. So 15 miles is plenty of distance, you know, for cars to be towed, and that actually is in compliance with the state statute. It also has a 15-mile rule. Requirements for the storage lots themselves are that the lots must be signed with the name, address, and telephone number of the tow storage lot. Lots must be secured by fencing, and they must have surface lighting that is sufficient to conduct nighttime business. And finally, we'll talk briefly on violations and identify responsible parties. So the proposed new ordinance dictates that it shall be unlawful to conduct a non-consensual tow from a private parking lot that is not properly posted in accordance with this ordinance. It will also be unlawful to engage a tow company to remove cars from lots that are not properly posted, or to engage a tow company that does not meet the requirements of this article to conduct non-consensual towing. Any person or towing company who conducts a non-consensual tow in violation of this article, and any person who engages a tow company in violation of this article may be charged with violation of the article. So a person shall be deemed to have engaged in a tow, engaged in towing company if that person either owns, manages, operates any private parking lot, or any portion thereof from which the towing company performs non-consensual tow. The penalty for violation of this new proposed ordinance can be either civil or criminal or both. So civil penalties will subject the offender to a $100 fine in the event of multiple violations. That fine increases for each event within a 12-month period. The cost for a second offense is $250, for a third, it's $500, $750 for a fourth, and $1,000 for any fifth or subsequent offense within a one-year period of the first violation. After that year, the next violation after that 12-month period is considered to be a new first offense. So violators must pay their civil penalty within 72 hours of the date and time their citation is issued. A police officer may also issue a criminal citation for violations of this article. That's because city ordinance violations issued on criminal citations are misdemeanor offenses. An appeal of the civil penalty amount may be made to the town manager or his designated within 30 days of the issued penalty, and the town manager may consider the merits of the appeal based on the gravity of the offense, corrective actions taken, associated cause for the applicant's previous violation history. If adopted tonight, staff would like to propose an effective date for this ordinance of June 1st, 2017. So that's a three-month delay, and we've, we're asking for that to give the police department an opportunity for some community outreach, to reach out to our property owners, to reach out to our towing businesses, and to give those folks an opportunity to make sure they're in compliance with the new ordinance. And the PO's office has graciously offered to help us with some work in that area.
So we know this was a little bit laborious going through it like this, but we hope that that made it easy to understand all the nuances of what we're asking for in this ordinance amendment. So in summary, we believe that this will be the most effective way to address the concerns for really all three of the stakeholders here, the citizens, the tow operators, and the private property owners. So staff recommends that council approve the ordinance amendment of chapter 20 of the Cary Code of Ordinances and add a new Article IV, which will be towing from private lots. Staff recommends an effective date of June 1st, 2017. Staff recommends an effective date of June 1, 2017, to again allow us time to educate the applicable parties and give operators and owners time to comply with the provisions of the ordinance. This concludes our presentation, and Captain Wilkins and I will stand by and answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Chief Goff and our Captain Wilkins?
Just have two little questions. If a person locks, let's say, her purse in the car and goes to the lot, will they typically be allowed to access the car to get their purse out to be able to make the payment? Or is there prohibited?
Yes, the tow company has to allow access to that vehicle to retrieve any-
Even on the private lot?
Even on the private lot. So whether it's on-site, private lot, you know, we do not want them to withhold any property that may be in the vehicle.
Okay. And what if the lot for the towing company is in a different jurisdiction? It doesn't matter? They still have to be signed the same way?
Right.
Finish the transaction?
Correct. The tow was conducted in Cary, so it would be-
Got it.
Under our ordinance.
Got it. Okay.
I've got a question on the violation part of it. So the person who said, who calls the tow company and has it towed away illegally for whatever reason, maybe the signage was wrong or whatever reason, they've got the violation. I understand, so the end user, the car owner, what's their, how do they get their car back differently than any other way? Like, do they still have to pay the whatever fee to get it back, and then they got to follow up and file a complaint, and they got to wait to get their money? Or is there some sort of, where's the penalty? How's that handled?
Yeah, the police, we would, I'm sure we would be involved at that point. They would call us, hopefully they would call us, and we would have an opportunity to go out and speak with whoever towed the car, educate them on the ordinance. And so it's not just, the scenario is that either/or or both, the tow company or the property owner can be responsible. So that tow company, if they tow that car, they're also on the hook. So we could go out and charge them or take what actions we needed to take there.
But getting their car back, does someone still have to pay to get their car back and then try to square up later, or do they immediately get their car released to them at no charge? Or is there a penalty because they've got to pay Uber to go 15 miles? And where's the fairness for the person who gets their car towed illegally, the victim?
Yeah, the hard part about it is, you know, there's a civil side of it, and then there's the criminal side of it. So our ordinance allows us to address the criminal side, and I'm sure a police officer would be pretty persuasive in helping them get that car back from that person if they were trying to hold on to that car, even though they towed it in violation. The other side of that is that if they tow a car illegally, we might be able to pursue another route in addition to the ordinance. We had a case recently where we charged a tow truck driver with unauthorized use of a motor vehicle because he towed a car from an area that he was not supposed to tow a car. So he conducted an illegal tow and got charged criminally for doing it.
But that doesn't explain, that doesn't help, still help the victim get their car back?
This, the tow company in that case released the car, no questions asked, and provided, you know, gave it back to-
Well, I guess what I was wondering is, is there a way in your teeth in this ordinance? Is there a way to put the teeth in the ordinance to where, does the state statute, would it allow you to soften the penalty if it's released immediately, forcing them to release it versus maybe a different charge if they don't release the car back to them immediately? Is there a way to put teeth in it that helps the public?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that for sure. We'd have to take a look at that and see, and I don't know if legal perhaps has an opinion on that.
No, I don't.
You don't have an opinion?
No, yeah.
An opinion, you have a legal opinion.
It sounds like what you're talking about can't be more civil than criminal. Whether the vehicle got towed, the tow company is most likely not going to release it without payment. If the car owner feels like, or can prove that their car was towed and the tow company was not following all the rules and regs, then they can pursue civil action against the tow company. All that Cary PD can enforce is criminal.
So what if part of our criminal ordinance was that they, just like they demand that they notify the PD within 15 minutes of the tow that they have towed a car with the tag number, why not, could there not be something added to it that would permit them to, if they don't release it to them and something, they could be an additional charge or an additional fine?
This is all authorized under state law specific to this non-consensual towing, and I don't believe, I don't know, but I don't believe it addresses that civil side.
Is this a, just a question, the problem that we're trying to solve, is it big?
Yes.
Oh, really?
How big is it? I saw, you had on the very first page-
Depends if it's your car that got towed.
No, I mean, is it a single car? Is it a, you know, you said 200 toes in six years? I'm just trying to understand. I'm not, it's not that I don't think it is, I just want to understand the complexity.
Sure. So we don't have a number of the actual non-consensual toes that have taken place, because we don't always know that, they don't call us and tell us. Some do, but most don't. But I can say that we went back in our CAD system all the way back to 2010, that's as far back as it would let me go. So from 2010 to 2016, so far, we've had right at 153 complaints to the police department, or we've had to dispatch officers to a scene or to a tow yard.
And that's huge. I mean, that is significant. I mean, that's how many complaints and officers dispatched you've gotten. Think about how many times that it happened and people just dealt with it and paid the fee and went and got their car and went home and-
That's correct.
Just, you know, that's huge. I've received a lot of complaints about this, especially in downtown. We just had one, what, week or two ago?
Two weeks ago, yes.
Where the individual that parked their car did not realize they were parking in a tow-away zone because it didn't have some of the signage that hopefully this ordinance is going to require a mandate in, so at least the person parking in the lot knows they're parking in a no-parking zone. Bigger overarching problem beyond that, which the ordinance can't fix, is some, we have people downtown who are not making their parking available for patrons after hours. You know, one of the comments you said earlier was, people post no parking to make sure they have parking available for their customers. Well, we've got a lot of parking available in downtown, that business or wherever that parking is, is closed. But yet we have other businesses that are opening in the evening that could really take advantage of that parking, but the people are refusing to allow it to be used and are having vehicles towed away. Nobody is calling the tow truck and saying, there's somebody illegal parking in my lot. No, the tow trucks are actually driving around looking for it.
To make money off.
Exactly. And, I mean, you're talking 180 bucks a pop when that car gets towed and taken four blocks down the road to a storage lot. You'll hate the hours. So that's a problem of the ordinance, or that you can't fix, and we get it. But I think what you guys have done here is your best effort, just like you said, at regulating and protecting both citizens, property owners, and tow companies best you can with, under state law. And I think you've done one heck of a job. I think it's, at least as far as downtown is concerned, you know, there's some other efforts we can maybe pursue with, you know, Ted and some of the folks to better educate how people can, you know, share parking. It's like I'm next to Havana Grill, you know, I don't post no parking in my parking lot because on weekends, well, they got some big event going on, they use my parking. During the day, when they got nobody eating there, early in the morning, whatever, I use their parking. I mean, it's kind of a give-and-take thing, and it works. And I don't understand why it can't work everywhere else, and it should work everywhere else, but you just got some people that figure, when my door is closed, you can't park in my lot. We got parking lots across the street from restaurants that people won't even let park in it. It's ridiculous. So thank you for what you've done, this is great. I hope it goes a long way to at least, more so protecting the public, because, you know, those lots are dark, people pull into them, oh, sweet, right across the street, you know, they don't even see the sign, you know? And they don't realize what happened or why their car got towed, so thank you. Thank you, sir.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion?
The motion includes the June 1st.
June 1st?
All of it.
Everybody clear on that? Anybody agree with that? Yes, okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Thank you, captain. We're now at Agenda Item 4, the bid award at the Kilmain Drive Elevated Water Storage Tank. This item was removed at the beginning of the meeting and will return to council at a future date, which takes us to Item Number 5, 6.5, the bid award for 2017 Water Main Replacement Project. Mr. Webster will present the item, and council may take action.
Thank you. Good evening, council. The town takes pride in providing our citizens with reliable, high-quality water for consumption, fire protection, and many other uses. While the media is filled with stories about the urgent need and high cost to replace aging infrastructure throughout the United States, the town of Cary plans for and consistently funds the maintenance and preservation of our utility infrastructure as described in the Cary Community Plan. This proactive maintenance approach is accomplished by annually evaluating and selecting pipes to be replaced, including coordination with the annual street improvement program. The pipes selected for replacement this year are at an age and condition that make them vulnerable to unexpected service interruptions and costly repairs. Replacing them helps ensure a continuous flow of water for our community's public health and safety. For this year's water line replacement project, staff has identified almost three miles of water line to be replaced within five areas of town. We prepared construction documents for the project, and on January 10th, the town received four bids. Staff reviewed all bids, and Triangle Grading and Paving was determined to be the lowest responsive or responsible bidder. Construction is scheduled to begin this spring and be completed by the end of the year. This project is also one of several utility projects funded through the 2017 Revenue Bond Sale. In summary, staff recommends that council award Triangle Grading and Paving Incorporated the 2017 Water Main Replacement Project contract for $3,476,992.50. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Webster or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor of please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Webster.
Thank you.
Now move to Item Number 7, our last discussion item, consideration of amendment to ordinance regarding public transportation system.
Mayor? I don't think it was pulled.
It was not pulled?
It was not pulled.
I'm sorry. I am mistaken. That concludes the discussion items. We're ready to go into closed session. Ms. Bush?
Oh, pursuant to GS 143, 318, 11A, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, among other things, the council expects to receive advice concerning the following lawsuits, the City of Fayetteville and the Public Works Commission of the City of Fayetteville versus the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission et al., and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143, 318, 10E.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are in closed session. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are in closed session.